So if anybody was planning to address the board tonight, I just want to remind you, you have to turn in a green sheet before we start the meeting. So if there's anybody that wants to do that, let me know right now. Are you interested? Okay. I will hold for one more minute.
She said she handed it to you.
She handed it? Okay. Anybody else? All right. With that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's Monday, January 8th, 2018. This is the Cedar Rapids Community School Board meeting. And we had started our meeting at 4:30 PM in a closed session. And with that, we'll just reconvene in open session again. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lavery. Just a few items for tonight. As you know, one of our five focus areas is workforce. To increase awareness of jobs available within our district and to attract top candidates, Human Resources has designed two job fairs. So the first is a teacher hiring event on January 29th from 5:00 to 8:00 here at the ELSC. And the hiring, the event will include an overview of the district followed by a mini interview with staff. Top candidates will be invited back for a more in-depth interview. HR will host a support hiring event on February 5th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM that will follow the same structure. Support positions, including paraprofessionals, custodians, transportation, and food nutrition positions, will be a part of that event. By way of reminder, we hire an average of 100 teachers and hundreds of support staff each year, so we're excited to proactively engage with potential future employees who must be just the right fit for our current and future open positions. Elementary students from across the district met in this building on December 14th to take part in a Model United Nations presentation. Each of the 56 students represented a different country and presented on that country to the General Assembly. Then as a complete assembly, they had to agree on a policy. What a great experience and opportunity for our students to receive this real-world event. Since the beginning of the Healthier U.S. School Choice Challenge in 2004, the U.S. Department of Agriculture's given awards to schools in 50 states and the District of Columbia. This fall, 91 award winners from Florida, Illinois, Iowa, Missouri, North Carolina, Tennessee, Washington, and West Virginia were announced, including our own Wright Elementary, the first school in the district to receive this award. So thanks to the hard work of Principal Crowe and the building staff, District Food Nutrition Services, and our IDPH consultant, Wright Elementary joins the 733 schools nationwide already receiving the Silver Certification. One especially notable contribution to the award was Wright's implementation of a farm-to-school pilot project in the 2016-17 school year that introduced students to new fruits and vegetables and the farmers who grew them. Representatives from the Iowa Department of Public Health represented the USDA to present the award in an assembly a few weeks ago. Congratulations to Wright Elementary. And finally here tonight, Franklin Middle School has been selected to receive the VH1 Save the Music Keys &amp; Kids Grant, which includes $10,000 worth of new musical instruments, including keyboards and a digital Casio Grand Hybrid Piano described by Casio as "the most advanced technology in digital pianos." It's designed to sound acoustic and has weighted keys to feel like an acoustic piano, but it does not need the regular tuning and maintenance that an acoustic piano requires. This grant was created to respond to the growing need for high-quality functional pianos in public schools and to provide even more students with a safe and inclusive community to be outstanding through the arts. West Music partnered with VH1 and Casio to bring this opportunity to Franklin. The keyboards will use in the choir and band programs, while the Grand Hybrid Piano will serve as the auditorium piano for concerts and rehearsals.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. We appreciate those comments. Are there any board reports tonight?
Just a quick comment.
Yes, absolutely.
Five years ago, we sold Monroe. And I drive by that school every day, and they've had some funding issues in the opportunities that they presented to us. And dirt is moving, and there's a lot of activity out there, and it's exciting to see that.
Other board reports. Gary?
I attended a Grantwood PTA meeting that Dr. Buck was keynote speaker. And I want to compliment him publicly on what a great job I think he did with explaining and fielding questions and so on for the master plan. It was really a nice, engaging conversation, community conversation. Legislative session opened today. Tomorrow, the governor will give her State of the State address. And I believe she's going to be in Cedar Rapids at Kirkwood on Thursday, kind of following up with her message of the State of the State.
Terrific. I'm going to pass those around. So I want to pass around, we had a discussion at an earlier board meeting, and we just want to pass around some draft language of a proposed procedure change, 802A, review of sites and facilities.
What's the proposed new regulation?
Proposed new regulation under procedure 802.0A. Great. So the review of sites and facilities. It is the goal of the board to provide appropriate school district buildings and sites for the education program. The board will strive to approve, provide an environment which will encourage and support learning. In providing this environment, district facilities and sites will accommodate the organizational and instructional patterns that support the education program. The board has final authority to determine what is necessary to meet the needs of the education program. This includes selection of sites, employment of personnel, contracting for services, approval of plans, authorization and acceptance of bids, and payment of work performed on contractual agreements. The board also has final acceptance or rejection of work done. As part of the board's plan for the district's educational programming, the board will include the buildings and sites' needs. A review of the district's existing facilities and sites and the needs for the district's facilities and sites will be discussed and determined by the board at least once every five years. I believe in our past discussions, there's been a request to have some sort of regulation built into the board policies that forces the board basically to look at our facilities and our needs at least every five years. Some districts do this every year or every couple of years. We just want to get in a habit that this doesn't go on for 10, 20 years without looking at it. And it was apropos with the discussions that we'll be having in our work session tonight. So this is the first time we're just passing this around. And I think, Laurel, at this time, you've had the attorneys help look at this regulation. And has our committee actually looked at this and reviewed it? And are there any recommendations from the district committee on policies and procedures?
So both legal counsel and the policy review committee reviewed this last Wednesday, last Tuesday, at our meeting. And what you see in front of you is what was proposed and recommended from that committee along with district counsel.
Okay. So will we count this then as a first reading, or does this need to come back into the official agenda at our next meeting on the 22nd?
I would suggest that it come back so that people in the audience have an opportunity to take a look at it prior to approval.
Very good. So again, you have this with you. It's apropos for our work session tonight, but we will put it on the board agenda for January 22nd. Okay? With that, any other comments or board reports at this time? All right. We'll go ahead and move into communications, delegations, and petitions. I do want to note that we have received three different written correspondence. One from Cindy Haddish, one from Scott Drazimski, and one from Lisa Bartusek, Executive Director of the IASB. So those comments, all of you should have those at your table at this point, and those will be put in to the minutes as any of the oral comments that we'll get tonight with their name and so forth, but not the complete written comments. So if anybody would like to see those that hasn't seen them, please ask Laurel Day, and she'll be able to provide those for you. For the public that has requested to speak in front of the board tonight, I do remind you that this is a meeting, a public meeting that's in the public. It's not a meeting where the board is going to get into dialogue and answer questions in the public setting with you. At this point, when we go into the public comments, you'll have five minutes apiece, maximum. Laurel Day, the Secretary of the Board, will keep time and let you know when you're getting close to the end of your five minutes. And Laurel, are we using the screen tonight as well?
Yes, it's right in front of here.
So you have a screen right in front of you here if you're speaking tonight. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and adjust the microphone, speak directly into the microphone, give us your name and your home address, and if there's an organization that you'll be representing in your comments tonight, please let us know that as well. I do want to thank all of the public, all of the stakeholders in the community who have, over the last few months, taken time to write us, to meet with us, to call us. We've met with hundreds of people and listened and heard from many, many voices, and we continue to listen and use that information to help shape our decisions. And we'll talk again later after these board comments. We'll go into a work session and, for the first time as a board, be able to talk in open dialogue about our questions and concerns and feelings about these facilities issues. So with that, first on the list, I have Rita McCord. Rita, if you'd like to approach the podium and give us your name and your address.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rita McCord. I live at 5040 Willabend Road Northeast, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. And tonight, I come to speak wearing many hats. I was a student and graduate of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Go Cougars! And my apologies to any former Jayhawks who may be in the room. For the past 13 years, I've had the honor and privilege of giving back to the system that educated, supported, and molded me into the elementary educator I am today. Additionally, I am the proud parent of two children currently enrolled in the district. As a student, teacher, and parent in this great community, I have witnessed the power of "we" numerous times. Just this year, our school raised over $1,500 to help a family with their students' medical expenses. And this is not the first year our school of over 400 students has gathered its arms together to uplift a child. The community at Hiawatha Elementary School has been able to provide funding for children's medical equipment, adaptive equipment, transportation for intramurals opportunities outside of the school day, and partnered with St. Luke's for dental screenings and sealants through the iSmile program. Additionally, we partner with the community to provide vision screenings, immunization access, and study buddies to our English-language learner population. How has Hiawatha been able to provide all of these extras while simultaneously serving English-language learners and housing a behavior-focused program? Some might say it is because we are a neighborhood school and come to the conclusion that this means we should keep the current model. But our school has never been just a neighborhood school in the time that I've worked there. It's been doubling as a neighborhood school and community hub for over a decade. Neighborhood schools don't disappear within a community hub system. They are amplified. If our building had 200 to 300 students, as a great number of elementary schools sit at that number in our district, its pooled resources couldn't be as powerful. Our elementary specials programs is evidence of this. With education inadequately funded by the state several years in a row, most schools have had to share specials teachers across town. The logistics of this solution make it difficult to build strong specials programming at the elementary level. But due to Hiawatha's size, we've had to share less, and it is how our 4th and 5th graders enjoy a high-quality elementary school show choir from its music teacher and how our students proudly participate in running club, engaging them in extra physical education opportunities. This is just one example of how and why Hiawatha Elementary may afford its students extra opportunities due to its size, and there are many more. But shouldn't we afford all of our kids in the Cedar Rapids district these opportunities and access to resources? One thing has been made clear to me throughout the listening sessions. People want to ensure the money being spent on proposed facility changes will truly be to the benefit of our kids. Building larger schools with greater accessibility and equity of resources will benefit our kids because the large hearts that walk into classrooms each day to teach, to love, and to heal will have resources strong enough, large enough, and safe enough to not merely educate, but to educate and uplift with the power of "we." Our kids need our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Erin Cronbaugh. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Erin Cronbaugh from 427 26th Street Southeast. Board of Education members, thank you very much for your service to our community and for your time tonight. I've been to several of the recent meetings regarding the plans that you'll be discussing tonight, and I do have many concerns about those plans. I've been very impressed, though, and very pleased to see Director Ann Hall at several of the meetings I've attended, willing to participate in conversation with people on an individual level. But most importantly, he's been present and listened to the questions and concerns people have so that he can engage in dialogue about those plans with those perspectives in mind with you, other board members, this evening. As you consider these plans, I know that you have all been contacted by many people, probably people with various points of view, and I'm sure that you have been at other public events that I may not have attended. So I don't mean just a single Director Ann Hall out. But I attended the conversation with Dr. Buck at Grantwood, and that was presented by the Grantwood PTA. That meeting was, as Director Ann Hall said, open, honest, and very, very effective. No consultants were present, and it was a chance to actually hear and be heard regarding the plan in a way that was different than any other forum I have attended thus far. Director Ann Hall's observation was that the board needs to have the same open listening and conversation with community members as that meeting provided. I urge the board to hold these kinds of meetings prior to making your decision. My observation and experience during that meeting was that it gave participants from all sides of the issues a bridge to trust. And even though I don't think a lot of minds were actually changed from their points of view about the plan itself, I do think there was a feeling that there was more honesty, openness, and listening than other district forums. Listening, honesty, and give and take are important in this large decision for our community, and you need to be leaders in this area. It is critical for community support, no matter your decision. I ask that you please consider public listening sessions with board members prior to voting on the plan. It's easier to contact members you know or to email everybody. And it's easier for board members perhaps to feel that they are hearing from all invested parties based solely on the people who they converse with. Having these smaller public outlets would do a great deal to make sure citizens all feel that their voices are heard. I also urge you to take the timeline for these conversations to happen and delay your voting on the plan and to use your power judiciously and wisely. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate those. Next, I have Val Dolizal.
Good evening. Val Dolizal, Executive Director of Cedar Rapids Schools, and I live at 3356 Sandy Beach Road in Solon. I've been an employee of the Cedar Rapids Community School District for over 33 years. And during my five years in this current position as Executive Director, working with all 21 elementaries, we've had many facility issues in many of the elementary buildings causing a disruption to the learning and in a school day. We've had cold rooms and cold buildings because of the malfunctions of old steam systems. We've had toilets that do not function, need immediate repair. And we've had steam pipes buckle floors and need immediate attention. The older buildings in the Cedar Rapids Community Schools, while repaired and fixed to a point where they are functional and very much appropriate for students, they do not always allow the best learning environment within those times that things occur in the school day. Our principals and our staff are amazing when working around an issue of plumbing and heating and ensure that students and staff are in the safest and best learning environments available. I had the pleasure of being part of the facility's task force. The commitment from the community members and parents on the committee was impressive. As a member of the committee and also an administrator in the district, I did not enter or portray someone who had a plan. I was not sure where the committee would go, not sure what might even be the outcome, but was impressed with the thinking and learning on how a 600-student facility will better support the needs of students, how we could look at current locations and create those neighborhood schools, and how we should consider these schools becoming community hubs. The conversations around working with the city of Cedar Rapids and meeting the needs of the city and the district was very much encouraged. The Cedar Rapids Community School District has had the great excitement of opening two magnet elementaries and a third in the fall of 2019. These schools are built on a vision that is brought to a staff. If one or more of our current magnets is closed and a new, larger location is provided, the magnet concept will not go away. The great thing is that the magnet concept will grow stronger and offer more opportunities for students and families in the Cedar Rapids district. The important thing about magnet schools is it's not about the structure of the building, but about the belief around a concept and a way of providing instruction. Those in a leadership school or a steam school now can remain in a leadership or a steam school in a new location. I also want to dream a little bit about the idea of newer facilities. I've seen some of these newer buildings and structures that are in our area. The schools are built where small numbers of classrooms, like an entire grade level or a grade level or two, are housed in a separate area or wing or a pod within the building. I've seen where teachers are working together to create environments where students might work with more than one classroom teacher to support their learning. Maybe a student learns in the kindergarten room for reading but is really needing more challenge in the area of math and can work with a first-grade teacher for math. These things are and can happen in some ways in our current building structure, but the difference is, is when there's larger numbers at a grade level. Like a prior speaker, four sections will allow us to have more ability to do that as opposed to our current two or three sections in many of our buildings. The possibilities for greater flexibility of instruction can happen through collaboration where we have more than one grade-level teacher working together to meet the needs of all. If we really are going to provide an environment of every lunar future-ready, just imagine the possibilities when teacher teams from more than one grade level can work together to achieve that goal. At the December 11th board meeting, several speakers shared concerns about families leaving Cedar Rapids if some schools are closed and larger ones are built. One of the things that often occurs in my role is that families are new to Cedar Rapids and looking for housing and come to talk to me about the Cedar Rapids Community School District. They want to hear about the district. They want to hear about the programs we offer. I assure that each of our schools are unique, and we all provide a different focus, whether it magnet, calm school, or we're going to college. The main thing is, is that the staff in our buildings embraces sport, all learners. In a recent conversation with a family moving from the East Coast, the dad shared with me, "I'm impressed with the opportunities for kids, but I'm really having a hard time seeing that these buildings are as good as you say, being from the outside, they look dated and old." I and the staff in our buildings know that great things are happening. Bar our image from the curb for some families is causing them not to look at Cedar Rapids Community School District. I thank you for your time and commitment to the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the city of Cedar Rapids as you make some important decisions in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Val. We appreciate your comments. Next, Keith Hammer. Mr. Hammer?
I don't have any prepared, excuse me.
Yeah, speak right into it.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's hurting my throat. So Keith Hammer, and I live at 515 Forest Drive. I don't have any prepared remarks. I really just wanted to come up and say thanks to the folks that I've met with personally, Brad, John, Manuel, guys, for taking the time to sit down and talk. I know it's a difficult thing for the community to go through, and I don't know how you do your day jobs, quite honestly. I know I've struggled to do my day job, as I've been contacted by numerous people from the city, from the Cedar Rapids Community School District that are afraid to speak out, quite honestly. And so I guess they've seen my name and said, "Hey, we agree," and whatever. So I don't know how you guys do it. I wanted to say thanks. Then I think the last thing, I'll make it quick, that I wanted to say too is, the thing I struggle with in this is getting people to see beyond what we've talked about, a couple of folks of nice, beautiful, new buildings that present all these opportunities, and to frame it in the overall community. And we've, some of us have talked about that. That's the piece that I don't want to get lost. The people that I've worked with, none of them want their children to go to a school that's inadequate. They all want great opportunities for all kids, everything like that. But how we do this shapes our communities, shapes our neighborhoods, right? And just keeping that in mind. And last thing I'll say is, you know, I came from and put my kids through a school with, for example, had three sections of kids, and it was an awesome experience. And as I think was mentioned, you know, where you could put them all in an area by itself and things like that, you know, I'm not advocating three or four or two or five. I don't care. But I want it to be done as a picture of how we want our overall community, how it impacts public safety, how it impacts, you know, everything. So that's it. Thank you again for all your time, and appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. We appreciate your comments. Next, I have Sarah Langhurst, I believe. Hopefully, that's correct. Hello, welcome, Sarah.
Hello, I am Sarah Langhurst. This is my 27th year as a teacher in the Cedar Rapids School District. I have taught in a lot of different buildings and grade levels. I currently teach elementary physical education at Pierce and Madison. Between my two buildings, I teach 22 classes, 530 students of physical education in grades kindergarten through 5th grade. I'm here to give a front-line perspective on the facility's master plan. Even though I will be long retired by the time the plan is fully implemented, I do care what happens to the Cedar Rapids School District. I currently have grandchildren that attend or will attend Cedar Rapids schools over the next 16 years. I feel that I have a vested interest and would like to see my dream of having new schools come to life. Most of our schools are in desperate need of repair. The teaching spaces and gyms are quite inadequate and outdated for the number of students and types of students that we serve. Many facilities are not handicap accessible. I have taught under a lot of different conditions. I've taught while the roof was leaking. I have taught while water seeped into the gym from the ground. I've taught in my winter coat, hat, and gloves when the gym had no heat. I have taught PE on a 100-degree day in a gym with no air conditioning, no windows, and no ceiling fan. Very few elementary gyms in the Cedar Rapids School District have air conditioning. I have ceiling panels that are deteriorating and falling to the floor. Most of the schools have a lot of dust and mold, and the air quality is a big health concern. The gyms at both Madison and Pierce, like most of the elementary gyms in the district, are only 18 meters long and 12 meters wide. I have 32 students in one of my 4th grade classes. They can't all jump rope at the same time without their ropes hitting each other. Our current facilities have a lot of limitations. We have small cafeterias and small classrooms. We don't have adequate spaces for all school assemblies and music programs. This is why I am strongly in favor of spacious new schools. We have become an urban school district and face a lot of challenges that urban school districts face. For the past 17 years, staff in all capacities have had their schedules tightened and workloads increased. I have seen many young, talented teachers leave our district in favor of other school districts that have nice new schools and more optimal teaching conditions. We desperately need new schools. I do see some flaws with the facility's master plan. This plan keeps a lot of our current limitations in place. My dream is to build schools for the programs that we would like to have and not for the programs that we currently have. In reading page 23 of the facility's master plan, it becomes clear that the district would like to build 600-student schools and staff them with skeleton crews. I am concerned that a 600-student school is staffed with only one counselor, one principal, one principal secretary, a halftime media specialist, a halftime nurse, and one specials teacher for art, music, and PE. Although it would be a more efficient use of time for a specials teacher to be at one school, the practice of teaching 24 classes and being responsible for the assessment of 600 students remains. If spaces are built to only accommodate this skeleton crew, then we are not really moving forward and addressing a lot of solutions to our current state of decline. My dream is for elementary students to have daily physical education. Each elementary building would need to have four separate gyms staffed with four PE teachers. We could return specials to 15 minutes a day and give classroom teachers the prep time they deserve. PE teachers could see the same 150 students each and every day. Daily physical education solves many of our district's urban problems. Data shows that physical education increases academic performance, decreases behavior problems, and makes students healthier and happier. Building four gyms onto each elementary school might be something that could push the facility's master plan across the finish line and attract families back into our district. More details of how each school would support 21st century learning is going to be needed for the community and for staff members to accept this plan. Some questions still needing to be addressed are, will there be more than one cafeteria at each building? Will there be an auditorium built at each? Will there be an auditorium built at each school? Will each of the classroom spaces be large and innovative? Are we tapping into other financial resources and grants to make our dreams happen? Are we having staff design the schools? I have a vision of the Cedar Rapids School District being a prototype for the entire nation to follow. We need to go big, and we need to go bold. We need to lead the state of Iowa and the nation once again in education. Our future is our wonderful students and our wonderful community. We need to seize this opportunity and go forward, not just with new schools, but the best new schools. Thanks for the incredible amount of planning on this project, being transparent, and allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much, Sarah. We appreciate your comments. And hopefully we'll get into some of those staffing-related issues in our work session. Kelly McMahon. Hi, welcome, Kelly.
Hi, Kelly McMahon. I live at 5508 Dostal Drive, southwest here in Cedar Rapids. I am a kindergarten teacher at Hoover Elementary School. I moved back from the city of Milwaukee to Iowa in 2011 and have taught at Hoover my seven years I've been here. I am here to speak in favor of the facilities plan. For the last three years, I have learned and been reading about community school, the community school model, and it just, it's exciting. It's what we should be doing for kids. And it's a conversation I've had for my, with my principal, ongoing conversation, and we're actually hoping to attend an institute in February in Milwaukee to learn more about the community school model, which would be amazing. However, when having that conversation this year with my principal, we're like, well, how would we have a place for a coordinator to work to help make sure that we have resources for a food pantry? Or maybe somebody to come in, do some clinical work with our kids for like vaccinations or something like that? Or a place for parents to have parenting classes? We added a section of kindergarten this year because we had over 20 kindergartners enroll from last, compared to last year. We had to lose our live, our computer lab. So we have no space. The space that we thought, oh yeah, maybe we could just use that for that space is gone, which was exciting, though. We're very excited. Had we not added that fourth section of kindergarten, I would have 30-some kids in my kindergarten classroom. We have a fourth grade classroom that's sitting around 28, 29, 30, and our fifth grade classrooms are the same, and there is only two sections. We have no space to try to do smaller class work with the kids and break them up into smaller groups, because our library is devoted to part library, part workspace for our structural design specialist. Our, what was our computer lab is now the space where three, four titles, teachers and paraprofessionals work with our students. We have 3.8 ELL teachers, because we have about 130 ELL students who are absolutely amazing, and it's what makes Hoover so incredible. We also have three or four people working in our multi-cat special education room. For the work that our guidance counselor does with providing coats and school supplies and snow pants and stuff like that that are available to our students through a private donation, we have a little, well, it's a nice big hallway closet, but nothing else can be done in there. Like, we can't do what we would like to do with our school if we were to adopt the community model for our students and our community. We want to be that hub of where the neighborhood goes to meet the needs of our students and our families. So I am totally in support of this exciting adventure. In addition to that, in my seven years in teaching at Hoover, I've taught in different parts of our building, because we do have the older facilities, and then we have a little bit of a newer part of our building. That was built about 15, 17, 18 years ago. And that newer part is great. It's geothermal, the heat's regulated, it's fabulous. However, when I spent my three years in the older part of the building, my principal jokingly told me I'm no longer allowed to say what the building temperature is, although I'm very accurate with telling you if the room is at the 72 degrees, or if it's at 68, or if it's at 65. We have classrooms still, after having worked on that, sometimes are at 40, at 56, 57, 58 degrees in that older part of the building. One year, that building, our building overheated to the point over the weekend where it killed the plants, including my classroom pet hamster, where I then had to explain to my students, "Oh, sorry, Ms. Kelly didn't properly wash her hands," and after touching the go, which made the hamster sick and it died. Sorry. I couldn't tell them that the building killed them, because that wouldn't be okay. So we need to have consistent heating in our class, in our buildings. We shouldn't have children wearing coats. We shouldn't have to have kids and have teachers open up their windows, which still is occurring this year because the building is too hot. We have classrooms that will heat up over to 80 degrees, like closer to 90 degrees. That shouldn't be happiness, not conducive to learning. So I fully support and excited to learn more about what you're hoping to do with this facility plan, because if we're going to do what we want to hopefully do at Hoover, we need more space. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate your comments. Next, Lawrence Winkowski.
Hi, Lawrence Winkowski, 4234 Morrell Road, Northeast. I am a member of the Facility Master Plan Committee, and my comments tonight are my opinions and not that of the committee. I want to acknowledge the excellent leadership that Dr. Buck, Steve Graham, and Rob Schwartz provided to Facilities Master Plan Committee. It was an honor to serve on the committee and with the other committee members. An important thing we need to remember is that there are adult conversations and family conversations. Please do not criticize this plan or the process in front of children. Doing so can only make it more difficult for the children to transition later, and our children should not be used as pawns in this process. Now that we have a comprehensive plan that should have been prepared 15 to 20 years ago, before Taylor flooded and Polk was closed, the community needs to support this plan. I totally support this plan. However, I also believe everyone's voice should be heard. Let this plan be tossed under a bus, driven over a few times, and let's see if it survives. It may lose a few digits or limbs, however, I believe the body of this plan will survive. Land swap and condemnation were not something the committee used in developing this plan. If the choice was to close a school A or B and there was a park nearby, the park was not an option we could consider. An idea I talked to Rob Kleinschmidt about before the committee even started was to acquire Pierce Park from the city. The district could acquire Pierce Park along with the first four houses along Winnick Road on the south side of White Pine Drive to provide more land and options for both Pierce and Kennedy. But I have to ask, what is our goal with this plan? To me, the goal must be to make the school, this school district the best in the state and provide an equitable education system for all students that attend schools in our district. The goal is not about preserving the historic heritage or saving school buildings. If the students of our school district are not educated, heritage in buildings will mean nothing. There will not be much of a school district or community left. Poor education will cause loss of home value and more crime. So what are we doing here tonight at a meeting which is not exclusively about the facilities master plan, at a location which is not served by public transportation or accessible to many of the same families this plan was developed to help? We have community groups forming and holding meetings because they don't like the plan and a newspaper that doesn't write objective articles. As an example, the criticism of the committee's makeup did not mention the benefits district staff made to the committee, or how many of these staff members had children in our schools. They focused on the number of people at the meeting versus the quality of the conversations that took place. This committee had no bobbleheads on it. As a community, we need to build the synergy that is required to focus our energy on educating all of the children. We need to make education a number-one goal while trying to accommodate secondary wishes when possible. And last, any benefits that families open and roll out of our district, that the families who open and roll out of our districts provide to our community are negated by the financial hardships and problems they cause by leaving the district. For those families who open and roll out of the district for educational opportunities that we don't provide, I understand that, but for the rest of those families that open and roll out of the district, finish the process and move out of our district, so someone who wants to live in our district can. And for those families who threaten to leave if this plan is adopted, just leave. This will still be a great school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence. We appreciate your comments. Next, I have Quinn and Nancy Anton Jensen.
I'm Nancy Anton Jensen, and this is Quinn. My son, he goes to Harding Middle School. We live at 1110 Linters Drive in Hiawatha, and he just has a little story about some accessibility things in the district presently, and something that even happened today that he wants you to consider as we're making plans for remodeling and for building new schools.
Awesome, welcome.
All right, so, yeah, I'm a student at Harding Middle School, and I'm in seventh grade. And so that means I have to go through up an elevator that has trash literally on the sides. I mean, every time I go up, I mean, I've gotten used to it now, but in the past, especially the first, oh, few days, you see junk just on the sides, sitting there, and you don't know how to get rid of it, and it's just nasty. Yeah. And so, and so the elevator itself is in the way, way back of the school, kind of near the, one of the emergency exits, I think, and it's in a copying room downstairs near the sixth-grade wing. And then in seventh grade, when you finally get up, it's in the way, way back of the eighth grade wing. So I have to come around all the way across the hall, then back, and then I stay there for two classes, head back, third period, fourth period, go back downstairs, and it takes about two minutes just from upstairs to downstairs. About two minutes. So when you only have four minutes to get from class to class, about half that's gone. And then the rest of the time, if it's like all the way on the other side of the school, like gym or band, usually I'm pretty late for that type of stuff. And now because of the elevator, I do get by with a few of those types of things, because, I mean, that's understandable. But yeah. But I mean, just today, so I was trying to open up this probably five-pound door or something like that. It's really heavy. And so when I'm opening it, my trapper gets knocked off my lap, and my stuff is then scattered all around in the place. And so I can't reach it without pushing into my stomach a lot, and yeah. And then, and I can't get out, because I either leave my stuff, go upstairs, find someone, then go back downstairs, or I sit there yelling at my, the top of my lungs, basically, trying to get the attention of a teacher, so then they can help me out, get my stuff up. And just because it's a lift. And then with, and so when you're considering these new buildings and remodels, please keep in mind that it shouldn't just be ADA compliant, it should be ADA-friendly. So if your kid has a broken leg or a neuromuscular condition in a wheelchair, would you want to go up an elevator that takes two minutes to get upstairs from downstairs with trash on the side? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And we really appreciate your comments. Thank you so much. Dr. Buck, you have those comments, I'm sure, right? Yeah, awesome. That's great. And then last, I have Tanya Johnson. Tanya?
Sure, have me follow him.
I know, it's a tough act.
Tanya Johnson, 3816 Riverside Drive, Northeast. I am the president of the Cedar Rapids Education Association, CREA for short. I was also one of the several teachers who served on the Facilities Master Plan Committee. I gave input into this plan as someone who grew up in Cedar Rapids, lives here with my family today, and has taught in the district for 27 years. From a personal perspective, I believe this plan is what Cedar Rapids needs. See, our students need safe, flexible, and future-ready facilities. See, our teachers need opportunities to work in a four-teacher team and time provided to have meaningful PLCs with more than just one teammate. And the Cedar Rapids community needs a school district that is equipped with all the tools necessary to provide our kids the best possible education moving forward in a constantly-evolving world. That includes addressing the fact that many of our facilities are more costly to repair than to replace. Now I want to share the views of CREA and CRODA, our teacher and para-education unions. Last week, we conducted a survey of our 1,000 members, asking them to answer the question of whether they support, are indifferent to, or oppose the master facilities plan that this board is considering. We found that over three-quarters of the teachers and para-educators view the plan favorably. An additional 20% say that while they may not fully support the plan, there are elements that they believe have merit. Some of those reservations include those that have been already brought up, concerns with having neighborhood schools and the building size, staffing concerns, and making sure transportation and boundary changes are well-thought-out. In summary, yes, we need facilities that work better and help alleviate challenges of class size, behaviors, and more collaboration. This is a plan embraced by a significant majority of educators. At the last board meeting, members of our leadership team shared our CREA/CRODA narrative. In that narrative, we talked about how we want what is best for our students. When our district has an opportunity to provide students with great facilities designed to maximize teacher collaboration, even out class sizes at each grade level, and provide music, art, and PE with one teacher in each building, this, and give our students pride in knowing that our community wants the best learning environment possible, we can get behind this plan with enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, and thanks to CREA and CRODA for those, that information. So thank you. All right, with that, that ends public comments. At this point, I'll go ahead and move to the consent agenda. So on the consent agenda, are there any items that board members would like to pull for a question or comment? Mary? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Jansen?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Chikobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Borcherdin?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. Next, we'll move into the administration section, where we're considering the 2018-19 school calendar draft. I'll turn that over to you, Dr. Buck.
So thank you, President Laberty. This is kind of the first swipe at the 2018-2019 school calendar, and Deputy Superintendent Mary Ellen Mosk has been working on that, so she's going to give you a little bit of detail on where we are with that process and what's being proposed.
Great, thank you. As you look at the school calendar, it looks probably pretty familiar to you. The 2018-19 calendar actually mirrors the 2017-18 calendar in many ways. As you look at the calendar, at the very start of it, we have the four new teacher pre-service workdays, and then the four teacher workdays at the beginning of the year, just like we did this year. And our start And our start date for the state of Iowa by state law is August 23rd, so we have the same start date again in the 2018-19 calendar. And along the right side, you see the green. That is, that represents the early dismissals that are taking place for professional learning community work and professional learning for our teaching and para-professional staff on those Fridays. And that's an outcome of some broad-based committee work that took place three years ago to look at how we could have more frequent and more embedded professional learning for our teaching staff. And so the only really change that you see in the calendar, and it's probably kind of hard to see on the board, but there are two professional learning days built into October this year, where there were two professional learning days built into January of this year. The reason for that is we really wanted to front-load that professional learning in October to really focus on the high-reliability schools framework, the work that we're doing to carry out the strategic plan and the district vision of every learner future-ready. So, again, there's not a whole lot of changes, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the calendar itself. And the one thing I would remind you of is that four years ago, we went to the, the state allowed you to go from counting the student days to the student hours, and we did, we opted to look at the student hours, which is the minimum at the state level is 1,080 hours. We have exceeded that at all levels for several years, and we continue to do that with using the hours versus the days. We build in a little bit of extra padding so that if we have floods sometimes or inclement weather, that that will help us a little bit with that. So, any questions? I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Any questions of the board? So, Mary Ellen, if community members see this in the board agenda, and it's out there in the public on the website, I'm assuming is a draft, if they have comments or input, is there a process for that, or has that already taken place at this point?
Absolutely. They could use multiple ways to contact either myself or someone here at the administrative offices. They could contact their school, and they would know who to have their child's school, and they would get them in contact with the appropriate person. They could certainly email, phone call, or, I'm trying to remember the name of the...
Let's Talk.
Let's Talk. Very good. Let's Talk is another opportunity that they could have to pose questions or concerns or comments.
Gary?
Has there been, to this point, much...
Make sure you speak into the microphone.
Yep. Has there been much at this point, just generally, because it somewhat mirrors what we had last year? The early dismissal release on the Fridays, are we getting the public reaction to that? Has there been much?
I guess I would say no. There hasn't been much public reaction with this being the second year. I know that when the committee did the original work, one of the things that was, we had originally actually proposed that it be on a Monday, perhaps a Monday morning. I know that there was favorability in the data that we collected from surveys and the data that we, the committee looked at for having that either on a Friday or Monday because it could be part of that weekend and make that weekend a little bit longer. So we have not had any feedback this year that I'm aware of on the Fridays.
I received some rather negative input over the weekend about Friday and our cancellation after the, and unfortunately, I was out of the house, and my wife fielded most of that commentary, but I think it was in, I understand, and I think I would agree with the best interest to have a, not bring kids in for two hours. Just didn't make sense, but just that, I guess I'm just relating that there was some public that were not real happy with that decision, but I understand, so.
Well, and that's an item we can revisit going forward. So another solution there would have been to move the school day to the end of the day, the regular dismissal time, but we hadn't communicated that overtly, so we were concerned that people may not have their schedule adjusted. So we're still open to feedback on that part of the decision-making if we think that a different solution, like having kids stay on that unique situation, is a direction we'd like to go, so.
I just thought I'd cheer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions? Thank you, Mary Ellen. We appreciate all that information. I know there's a lot of work that goes in to make sure that that meets all the state regulations and needs of the students and so forth and of the staff, so thank you very much on that. With that, let's see here, we're going to go ahead and move into our work session on the facilities master plan. At this point, does anybody need a break, or...
I was going to suggest, could we take a five-minute break?
We can definitely take a five-minute break during this time. I don't want to take too much time. We'll remind the public during this time, the board will remain with the administrators here at the front table. I believe we will be inviting some of the members of the facilities master plan committee to join us as well. We will be having a discussion in the public, and you're certainly welcome to stay in the audience and listen to any of our discussions, but it will, this part will not be a discussion with the public in the audience. Okay? So we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 6:35.
Yeah, you are.
Do we? All right. Are we good?
We're good.
Do we have everybody that we need? Everybody's at the table? Boards already? Awesome. So, thank you, all of you, for being here. I know the committee members, I personally, and representing the rest of the board, want to thank you once again for, I can't even imagine how many hours you all put into getting up to speed on this plan. I would request that the audience keep your voices down while we're trying to discuss this because that is disruptive, so thank you. Again, thanking the committee members for all of your service to this, to the administrators who put in literally hundreds of hours' work on getting this information put together for us. And again, this is really the first time in a public setting that we, as a board, will have to talk amongst ourselves and really in a legal environment. So we have had, all of us, many, many, many comments from the public, from stakeholders, as I mentioned before. Although the whole community may not know, every conversation we've had, we've met with every community organization that's requested to come and talk with us, and we've had multiple dialogues with several of them for dozens of hours. We've looked at multiple alternative plans. We've had architects, engineers, accountants, all kinds of different people look at those plans to see if there were alternatives that made sense or could be considered beyond what the committee had considered. So to all of you, and to really to all of the public that has given us feedback over the last number of months, I think we want to say thank you. With that said, the board, many of us, really all of us, have done due diligence as best that we can with the information that's been presented to us, again, in the questions asked of us. So one of those questions was referenced to the Des Moines School District and an article that appeared in the Des Moines Register in November, and I had the opportunity to actually speak with Dr. Anhurt?
Aithart.
Aithart, this afternoon, and he gave me some written response as well, but part of it was that they're trying to go to 500-seat elementaries, that 600 seats is really too large, and I just wanted to get his take on that. He said, he said, "Nothing could be further from the truth on that, that the ultimate size that he would recommend for an urban district like us is exactly what this committee is presenting to us tonight, which is 600 seats for section elementaries." He said, "They have schools, over 760 students in the elementary schools, and they need to get that smaller. They're building one that is 500, that has an automatic design built into it for an additional wing to bring it up to 600, which is what they would like to do." So, again, that's one example, trying to do due diligence as a board member to understand, is this other information accurate? And we respect many of the things that are going on in the Des Moines School District. It's where we have 21 elementary schools, they have 40 elementary schools, and lots of similar populations as we have, and even probably, I would say, some more challenging situations that we face in the Cedar Rapids school districts. So with that, again, I do want to thank all of the board. This will be a time for us as a board, if you have questions or comments, I know many of you have presented questions to the administration over the last few months, and they've done a lot of work to dig into those questions in addition to the public comments and the one-on-one meetings and group meetings. I've asked Dr. Buck to help us maybe put this into a contextual framework of our overall strategic vision and goals for the district. He did a terrific job at the Downtown Noon Rotary Club today, gave some really nice information, which will be an ongoing presentation at that Rotary Club, so we're looking for some great output from that as well. So with that, Dr. Buck, I'll turn it over to you to help us contextualize this.
Thank you, President Lavery. So I'm going to give you the thumbnail version of this, and if you want the extended version, if you go to our State of a District address that's on the website from December 8, 2017, I went into this information in a lot more depth than I intend to tonight, but I do want to contextualize, we're having a lot of conversation about facilities, but if you could click back a couple years ago when I was hired, the primary driver of this board when I was hired was closing the expectation or opportunity gap that exists in our system for our students. That was, that was a lot of the conversation that we had as a part of the hiring process and what we would think about doing related to that issue that exists in our system. So what I would say is this, and I'm going to give you the five-minute version, not the 25-minute version. So the five-minute version is this, Cedar Rapids is still a great place to educate your kids. I have three of my six kids in the system, and the other three, it's because they've graduated, not because they're in a different, anyway. They're two at Iowa State, it doesn't matter. So the three remaining school-aged kids, and they, two go to TAF, one go to Kennedy, they're getting a great education. I'm confident they're going to turn out well and do all the great things that you'd hope for, your own kids. So the system in many ways plays, does really well for kids. At the same time, there's something we need to acknowledge, and that's part of this conversation, and that is, depending on, we have traditionally underrepresented kids in school, it's true in Cedar Rapids, it's true in Iowa, and it's true nationally. Four underrepresented groups of kids, and they're traditionally underserved, and those groups are kids that are racially and ethnically different from the white or Caucasian population, students that are on free or reduced lunch as defined by the federal guidelines, students for whom English is not their first language, and students on individualized education plans, often thought of as special education. Depending on which of those groups you find yourself in as a student in Cedar Rapids schools, you have wildly varying likelihood of results. I'll give you some numbers to contextualize it. Third-grade English Language Arts, our proficiency rates, depending on the gender of the student, the free or reduced lunch rate, those groups I just talked about, the variance is 30% to 65% proficient. The variance in 8th-grade mathematics is 26% to 67%. So there are groups of kids, if you're in, the 26% group is African-American males. You have a 26% chance of being proficient if you're in that group, 67% likely if you're a white male or white female, I don't have that one right in front of me, and graduation rates that raise from 55 to 93%. So we have a system that while it serves lots of kids, is not serving all of our kids. So we have spent a ton of time and energy in our conversations about the facilities. And the reason this needs to be contextualized is this, our kids need better experiences, and part of that is their facilities. Our bold strategic plan contains five pieces. One of those pieces is telling our story. We're working on that a little bit when I tell this story tonight, but we have other strategies and tactics, and again, I promise five and not 25. We can go into the work that's underway related to telling our story. The second piece that we're working on is our workforce. We did a community engagement survey with our staff, or us, employee engagement survey with our staff last spring. Good news emerged, people are proud to work here and they intend to continue to work here. Not-so-good news is morale is incredibly low. So we did input sessions with staff, and three things emerged as challenges. One of them is what's happening with substitutes, because that is a multi-dimensional issue. You wouldn't believe how many tentacles the substitute and not having enough substitutes presents. The second is the behaviors of students in our classroom and our ability to better support those behaviors in classrooms. And the third is the disconnect between the ELSC and what's happening in our schools. So we are taking strategic action to deliver on those three things, and because we chose really complicated, complex things, we haven't solved them yet. But it's not because we don't desire to solve them or that we're not putting effort into solving those things. So the third one is learning outcomes. So when I meet with employers, employers don't talk to me about photosynthesis and the desire, man, if our kids only understood chlorophil better. They don't talk to me about, man, Soca Toa, that rocks, right? Let's apply it right now. I was actually in a, this might be six minutes, I was in a geometry class at Wash the other day, and this young man was doing a problem on measuring your shadow and then comparing it to the height of a building. I said, "Take comfort. I do that like once or twice a week. I am all the time measuring my shadow." So, I say that to say, the learning objectives and the profile of a graduate is what needs to start to better drive the conversation in Cedar Rapids schools. So what are the attributes, skills, and dispositions of kids that we want to build in them so that they have capacity and agency to be dropped into a new circumstance and be successful? So that conversation needs to be driven differently in Cedar Rapids, and we're still going to worry about content because algebra still does matter. That's math, I think, that actually does apply. Not that I don't love geometry. The fourth one is related to intercultural development, intercultural capacity. As our kids become more diverse, we have a responsibility as the adults to better understand our own cultures and how to reach across and within cultures. And that work is related to intercultural mindset. And so we're doing a significant amount of work with that. We have pilot schools with that work underway in our system. And the fifth one is facilities. So I say all that to say this, yes, facilities matter, yes, I understand the conversation as it relates to facilities and the impact in our community, and at the same time, we have a system that's not serving all kids, and we have a five-point strategic plan that we think, when done in concert, is going to be more likely to lead to even better outcomes for all of our students. So that is intended to sort of say, yes, facilities matter, but so do a whole bunch of other things we're working on as a district.
Thank you, Dr. Buck. That was a little over six, but that's all right. I'm not sure about your, I'm not sure about your shadow comment. We're going to look into that. So I'm going to open it up. I have some questions that people from the community have asked of me that I'll try and get to along the way here, but who would like to start with questions? Many of these questions we've all heard or been asked, so who would like to start? Jennifer?
I'll start.
Okay.
I have a question about the construction. Does the new construction include functional accessibility for ADA needs, or is it simply ADA compliant? Does anybody know?
So I know when we went and looked, a number of us toured the 600-seat elementaries in Linmar and down at College Community, it just seemed the hallways were much wider and those things. Is that, is that, I mean, I'm assuming that that's the type of modern standard that we're looking at. Is that ADA compliant, or is that above and beyond?
Honestly, I wasn't sure of what the differences between those two concepts were in terms of functionality and compliance. In my mind, they're one and the same, and I'm looking at you, and I'm thinking that's probably not accurate, but I do know that our buildings, we've experienced the tours in Kansas City, we've experienced the tours at College Community in Linmar and seen awesome elementary schools that have wide hallways that are used for far more than passing. They're on one level, so there's not multiple stories and elevator concerns and frustrations that we heard so eloquently today. I can assure you that whatever functionality and compliance regarding ADA in a new building construction would be done appropriately. And the cost per square foot that we've used, by the advice of our architects, include all aspects of ADA and current code compliance.
I think, thanks, Steve, for that. I think, building on what you've asked, Jennifer, is, as Quinn did so eloquently say, focus on ADA compliant, friendly as well as compliant. And to me, that friendly is that he isn't having to travel from one extreme of the building to another, and it sounds like with a single-story building, we're addressing some of... to another, and it sounds like with a single-story building, we're addressing some of that. I also heard tonight, and have heard from several, in several conversations, the engagement of teachers in the layout, the structure, not just copying buildings. And I think we saw that in the building that we've toured, where they even said, if we were to do it again, this is what we would change, and what kinds of activities are being done. I know that we're talking about the theory of the plan, and that this is getting down into the actual design, and what, where doors go and things like that, but I think that's important to know and to consider, is that we're talking to the teachers that will be in there day in and day out, and how the layout will be, and hearing that multiple cafeterias and those things may be useful.
So maybe what we should do, which is my fault, I did not go around and have the committee members introduce themselves, because I know you all come from a varied background, and Julie, I know you're a teacher, so maybe you can help us understand that perspective. But would you like to start over here, and we can just kind of go around, and tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and the work on the committee that you...
My name's Bill Wasta, 3120, 44th Street Northeast. My day job, I'm the Executive Director of the Med Quarter here in Cedar Rapids, and been on the committee since the start. My background, I spent 30 years in the commercial and education design industry through office furniture and design, and now I'm doing Med Quarter.
Great, thank you.
I introduced myself earlier. I'm Val Dolezal, Executive Director, mainly working with elementary, and I've been with this district for over 33 years.
I'm Jim Craig. I'm an attorney by day. I've graduated four kids through the program. I've been on the Facilities Committee, I think, for about 17 years, if I'm not mistaken. I think we started in 1998 or '99, and then although we got into boundaries in 2011, there was a lot of facility discussion at that time as well. And so I haven't experienced with design, but that's my experience with the facilities.
I'm Julie Kane. I am a teacher at Washington High School, and I've been there for 20 years. And I also am a parent of children in the district.
My name is Al Rowe, and, well, I can say it this way, I student-taught at Kennedy in 1968, so you can do the math. And I worked as an administrator at Kirkwood. And I would just say that the core of this region is Cedar Rapids. The core of everything that occurs in the vibrancy here in Iowa starts right here. And I've been privileged to be on this committee. And when it comes down to the plan part, I think the way I felt about it was that we really, given all the data and all the great interactions, and we had two real assets that happened to us during the process. One was, and it doesn't happen all that often, is we were schooled in this before we started. And sometimes when you go to a place, the strategic plan and the goals, it's just rhetoric. As the process went on, and we kept anchored down into academics, culture, and economics every single time, I can just tell you this, that this board and district front-end loaded this thinking process a long time ago. And when you handed it off to us, I felt it was the opening of the door to dig deep and come with, second point then, what I interpreted what we did, is we ended up with a directional framework, tackling many of the issues. And there are many things that go with that framework, and just to close, I would just say that what I observed tonight, and the questions that are before you, now the real ongoing dialogue in design and the kind of learning experiences that Quinn and others will have, then it gets real. And I think the real story, pencil is just starting to get on the paper, because that's when all the levels of engagement occur way beyond a committee that was very excellent. So we just basically ended up with a directional framework, and now the flesh gets put on the bones by many more people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Wright, and I work with United Way. I am also a parent of one graduate from the district back in 2010, and currently have a junior, Jeff.
Hi, my name is David Brand, and I'm the Principal of Kema Leadership Academy Magnet School, and I'm in my fifth year as the principal there.
All right, and I think we know the rest of the administrators. All right, is that good? All right. Gary, you have a question?
Yeah, John, a comment, and I know John has already thanked the committee, but I want to, again, go back particularly Jim for his diligence and a long-time involvement with this. And the other is, you've done, as a committee, you've done what we as a board asked. We asked for a, after going through the process of some school closure because of overcapacity, as a board, we realized that we can't wait 25 years to do it again. And so we wanted to keep it fresh, and we asked you to do a review, and along with that review, also look at funding, a reality too, of how do we, at least, help us to give us some direction. I have to say, I was quite, you came back with something I didn't expect, quite a bold plan, and I thank you for your diligence, your hard work, and your foresight. Going into now, as I think you've said, it's now up to us as a board, what do we do with the information, and how do we, we have carte blanche. We can accept wholeheartedly your plan, the information, we can modify it, we can change it, we can say we don't accept it at all. Those are some tough decisions. But I want to go right now to the facility planning, and I hope that as we move forward, someone said, how do we, we talked about ADA appliance and so on, appliance. I've visited the schools in, some of the schools in Linmar and College Community. They were good facilities, got an opportunity to see what a larger building would look like, but I was disappointed in the fact that, I don't think, and again, the way they were structured, that was their community. I don't think it had as much community access as that I would like to see in our buildings. The gym, the cafeteria, you know, maybe, but not the overall facility. As we move forward, I believe that, I know that the, whatever we build, these don't belong to the district, but they belong to the community. These are community buildings. They're going to be paid by the community, they'll be used by the community, they'll be for the community, there'll be a community access. So I think that we should start from the ground up and not with a architectural plan, well, this is what it looked like. No, what do we want in the buildings, and from there, how do we build a structure that would provide that? And I also would hope that it'll develop some uniqueness to where the buildings are being built, that one building isn't a carbon copy, a cookie-cutter look of what another building is, because there may be different community conversations and needs that go into it. We have, you gave us a bold plan, and I think we have an opportunity to move forward with even bolder plans too. Some things that this community maybe hasn't seen before, maybe the state hasn't seen. Some things in this building that would be intergenerational, that would be inviting for older people to come in. And I'm going to be real cautious, because I don't want to start looking at designing a plan, because again, it goes to the community. But I envision lots of opportunities that would make it helpful. Community health centers, we've had them in the past in some buildings, and because of funding, they've gone away. After-school, before-school programs, daycare structure, there are all kinds of things that I think if we start thinking outside of the confines of what we've had in the past, and what can we do to not build for five years, but to build for 15 and 20. Along with it, it has to be flexibility into what we do, because who knows what will happen? As I jokingly say, we talk about busing. I don't know. Some of the poor population in five years would be able to go to their car and say, "Take the kids to school," and the car will do it. And, you know, if you can think, if you can imagine it, it can happen. I'm not saying that it will, but times are changing very fast, and we have to have the flexibility. And I really appreciate the resolution that we had tonight to come back, and it will be in policy, if this goes through, that we, nothing is cut in granite, that we come back and look at it. So as we move forward, I hope that, again, we start with not that vision already, this is what the plan's going to be, it's this, this, and this, but we have those community conversations and develop the facilities. There will be community facilities.
I think, Gary, you know, one of the things, just sitting here as board president when we had our meeting last time, one of it was that you in particular, and some others, myself included, wanted to have sort of that visualization of what we're talking about with, you know, modern parameters in an elementary school. And that was the sort of impetus to go out and see, actually, what are we talking about? And graciously, College Community and Linmar said, "Come on in," and they spent, I don't know, a couple of hours with us, at least, when Rafael and I were in the building, and we had a chance to talk to the PE teacher and the art teacher that are there full-time, and the gymnasium that's three times bigger than what the physical education teacher described in a lot of our current buildings, and the ADA-friendly, really wide hallways, and, you know, the wing that was the cafeteria and gymnasium, and they wished they would have built some sort of wall so that in the evenings and weekends, the public could use that part and not have to worry about, you know, going into the other part. So that was part of the impetus for that, and I completely agree that, for me personally, these shouldn't be just cookie cutters. It may be efficient to do that in some of these locations, but some of the historic buildings in particular that are in this plan or that we might talk about, wouldn't, you know, be appropriate to look at a cookie-cutter approach. So I know that, Mary, did you have a comment, or I know Jennifer had a comment as well? Do you want to say something, Mary?
Yeah, I do. I would like to ask the committee, a lot of the things I'll say tonight are things that people have shared with me regarding concerns. When you talked about closing some schools, you know how it impacts neighborhoods, what was your thought process in that discussion, and how did you overcome the fear, if you will, of bringing that forward as a consideration?
I've never lost for words, but that was a detailed discussion that we had a number of times. I think when we got done, we looked at it as we're expanding these communities slightly by going, by consolidating schools rather than eliminating neighborhoods with schools completely. And so we made some proposals about which schools might be consolidated together and then where you'd go, but the hope was that, while it expanded the community, it allowed for more diversity, and it allowed for better educating our kids, because we had the ability to keep class sizes smaller, we had the ability to provide special education programs in schools where the kids could stay in their neighborhood. So there was concern about it, but we really thought, if, I mean, maybe as an example, I don't know if this would be true, but if you consolidated Garfield and Arthur, you're really talking about a larger community that's similar and in the same vicinity. Yes, people have to go a little bit farther, and we thought transportation would have to take care of it. But we also thought that's keeping a community together, even though it's expanding it somewhat. The other thing I would tell you is that if you look at our Facility Master Plan belief statements, which I think are helpful, and you look to closing schools and repurpose, we talk about community hub discussions to consider the traditions of that neighborhood and that school. We talk about how we incorporate the neighborhood geography into the new school, what programs you could do. I know in Kansas City, when they went to some of those schools, they took some of the historic parts of the schools that they consolidated it and incorporated it into their new building, so that they could bring those traditions and that history along. And we thought if we had that kind of community input and community discussions, we'd bring those communities together, and we'd have a school that represents a slightly larger community, but still has the community feel. Is that a fair statement?
Justin, I'm going to ask you, since we're talking about the actual schools under consideration, I believe, is there a slide of the heat maps that we can put up? Most awesome. That's helpful, and I know that the board has seen that. Were there handouts of that as well, or just the...
By your side, the board, you have a handout that shows that heat map.
There is.
It's actually in this, it is, it starts off with the...
We have, we may not have had those yet, so let me pass those around.
Leslie, you were going to say some, you had a comment.
Well, I'm not sure I was going to add a whole lot more to the comment. I think that there are always trade-offs involved, and there was a lot of conversation about the trade-offs that would have to be made, but one, if we offer our students better learning environments, better suited to the future that they're facing, that is a key element. And also, there's a great deal that can be done to build community within the schools, and I think that aligns well with some of the efforts that the district is pursuing around community engagement in a different way going forward. And when you think about it, our kids may be able to walk to the elementary school, but when they transition to middle school, you know, oftentimes that school is further away from home. So, you know, how do you, I think when you look at our value statements, it was very focused on valuing community, but also pursuing excellence for kids and making those trade-offs as best we knew how. And when we looked at those maps, we also tried to look at how to balance the geography of the buildings, so that there was a reasonable distribution of buildings across the district on both sides of the river, you know. But again, some of these, I think, what people may have lost sight of is, at least for me as a member of the committee, we understood that these weren't final decisions, we weren't designing the buildings, we were making some broad recommendations about the nature of the facilities plan, and that those things would be refined over time as more input was sought, both technical as well as community.
I think, how do you persevere when you're, those have those tough questions in front of you? I think, number one is, I think this committee evolved, and the more we came to understand one another and just actively listening to one another with all the different perspectives, what in fact happened is, is I think we grew a sense of community. And so, kind of like an organization has a culture, and then departments within a big organization have cultures too, I think what we really were saying, that this is a community in the whole who has made a commitment to the kind of excellence it's choosing, but we wanted to honor the, kind of the patchwork quilt of all the other cultures in the city. So early up, when we got it down into, gee, this is going to get into talking about closing, oh, that kind of dawned on us. Then it got real. And one of our first shift points was, we don't want to just talk about putting a building out on the edge of town, like many places do. That's when we shifted to the community as a whole. And so this particular framework, if you will, is grounded in, I think, two things. One, the experience the committee had, but more importantly, the sense of community and the yearning for community that exists already in our city, and that desire to connect. And so with the resources, that's why the possibility here is different, I think it's different than the outlying schools, to be quite frankly, to be quite frank. Sidebar, 50 years, well, I've been in the two adjacent districts where we designed buildings, okay? And all I can tell you was, is we were designing buildings to grow. And we had some academic things that we wanted, but it was really, there's more students, we need to grow. we need to grow. What you're tackling is a different dynamic of growth. You're tackling the richness of what it means to grow community. That's why this listening piece, as it begins to expand now, very naturally, just like I was feeling it in the room tonight, it's starting to grow and that's where the community is born. So, how does a, a person face this complexity when all these questions come at you and people want certainty? The eye on the ball for me after 50 years is basically, things get crystal clear if I keep my eye on each child and everyone who surrounds them daily. And it gets so clear because there's so many distractions and just stay clear there. And I, I felt that within the committee. So, this process really worked. And for a lot of known and unknown reasons, that's the best way I can express it.
Are there questions? Nancy?
I know one of the reoccurring, reoccurring questions that I get is from folks in the community, depending on the schools that will be closed, transportation. And that's, that is key. And are we, would we work on the boundaries for transporting students? Because I, I hear that a lot. How will our students, if they've walked now, get to the various schools? Depending on what we decide to do.
I think there's a, there's two things that come to my mind, Nancy. And the first thing that I think you should be able to see, this is in the packet of information where the first page is a sheet called Community Reasoning Between Site Investment. Now, if you, I've, I've numbered these pages, that's my handwriting, the numbers on these pages. So, if I say I'm on page three, we can all be on the same page, okay? So, the first thing that stands out is the numbers of students who either walk or bike to school, which is significantly lower than the number of students that either bus or car to school. That's just the reality of our 21 elementary buildings right now, which is information that we've shared with our school bus consultants, that we've engaged in a study so that we can come back to you on the 22nd of January and give you specificity as much as possible given that we've had a fairly short frame of time for school bus consultants to do their work. But we want to know what the impact would be if we have fewer, larger elementary buildings with a two-mile, which is our standard based upon the code of Iowa for elementary students. If a student lives further than two miles, then they, or two miles or greater, they receive free transportation. But we want to take that a step further and look at one and a half miles and one mile to see what those impacts would be. So, we are very, very much looking forward to that information. Now, in terms of overall transportation cost in the context of operating savings when we're looking at fewer, larger elementary schools, and this gets a little bit into a comment that was made during public hearing, a public forum regarding the FTEs in a building. And we can thumb wrestle over some of the FTEs, plus or minus, when we looked at the study that we did on what operational savings would be. And materially, with adjustments, we still have a significant amount of operating savings with our elementaries when we move from 21 to 13. Now, going back to your comment regarding transportation, Nancy, we've not yet know what these numbers are from school bus specialties or school bus consultants, but we have ballparked something in the $500,000 to $600,000 range for a two-mile based on Iowa code. Even that against the nearly $3 million of operational savings is still a substantial annual savings that we would see as a district that we could rededicate and redirect back into the classroom, so.
Steve, all of that money that you're talking about, that the committee worked on in terms of the savings, that's, that's savings that is intentional to go back into the teaching mission of the, of the school district. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We live in an era of very scarce public resources. We have experienced as a school system, seven consecutive years of budget reductions because of very low rates of growth and state funding. And I don't see that there's going to be much of an end to that in the future. So, my job is the bean counter. That's what I do. But I certainly believe, as Dr. Buck so eloquently stated, this is a whole lot more than just facilities and it's certainly a whole lot more than just the numbers, believe me. But it is still a reality. We are living in a very, very difficult public resource environment and we must look at ways of becoming more efficient so we can do more with less.
Yeah, and, and I think that that's, that's a, a great comment because it really reminds us of the multiple things that you as a committee considered. So, we obviously have this operational sort of cliff that's going to potentially happen in, what is it, 2024, I believe? So, we've got that whole financial picture that, that we have a fiduciary responsibility to the community as, as the elected school board. But we also know that anecdotally, at least hearing from realtors, that there are folks that are choosing either our schools or others because of the actual facilities and the curbside appeal, as somebody had mentioned, because, you know, they're more difficult to get around because they're not as flexible. We want to have higher morale with our staff. Well, I can tell you, when you have a lot of light and you have spaces where students can move around more easily, I think staff are probably going to be of higher morale. When I talked to the Des Moines superintendent today, he said, "Much easier to retain staff, our specials, PE, music, art, and technology teachers, when they're in one building all day, get to know all of the kids, much higher retention rates than when they're sharing buildings and, and not really getting to know the kids as well as, as they could in one building." So, again, multiple things that I think we're looking at in this process. And I've asked to have the heat maps sort of put up here so that we can maybe take a look at that. But, you know, as we look at this, some of the questions that the community has asked have to do with quadrants. One of the things that I noticed as a committee, and somebody had mentioned it, is you sort of geographically it appears looked so that the schools are spread out sort of evenly. You had looked at these heat, heat maps, I'm assuming. Does anybody want to talk a little bit more about that, sort of that process?
I'll start. I mean, we had a lot of conversation around, let's first look at where the, obviously the red is. That tells us there's a lot of kids in those areas. But then let's look at what our current buildings are. What, and we had multiple meetings where we had conversation around, how could we look at some schools? What would be some combinations of schools that could make these work? There was at one point where, and I think you said it well, Al, that we talked about, well, let's put them all on the border, but that makes no sense because that's not where our kids are. How do we spread this out across the city? The other thing that we looked at, both with the heat map and then also our feeder pattern, was really, how do we, how do we equalize and, and make this more distributed across the city as we feed up to middle school and to our high schools? And so, that conversation also led to knowing that, then what would we want to do as we look at those schools on the east side or the west side and that kind of thing? So, there were definitely conversations, we're using the heat map but also using what would make some good combinations. I think Leslie said, "Let's look at what would make some good neighborhood possibilities as we maybe would close a school, combine them into another school," and knowing what is on the information that we got from Rob's group and, and the information around where our kids are at.
Other board questions?
I was gonna, if I could add to that.
Yeah, really, go ahead.
I think the, the considerations about the combinations of schools probably went over three or four different meetings. It was extensive. And we looked at a wide variety of arrangements that might work. And also, part of our thought process in there was what a, a pure feeder program would look like so that students could have a sense of community as they go through, knowing that they're going to, when they go into elementary school, that they're gonna be a warrior when they get to high school. And so, we wanted to, we, we took a lot of attention to maintaining pure feeder systems so that there aren't cross-mixes of students that feel torn once it gets time to choose where to go.
One thing that, that has been brought up by some in the public is that the committee that you all sat on looks pretty white and maybe middle-class, upper-middle-class, I'm not quite sure, I have no idea, except that you appear to be Caucasian. So, in this process, in this process, there is a concern that maybe we're disproportionately impacting some of our minority populations, our low-income student populations, that there doesn't appear to be diversity represented on the committee. And that's kind of a tough question, but Dr. Buck, I know the, the administration went through that process. Do you want to talk to us a little bit about that process? And, I mean, what was their representation? And looking at these heat maps, we know that some of these, these areas, you know, Johnson Elementary, for instance, in Wellington Heights is a, a relatively high minority, relatively low-income area. The city's been doing a lot of work in that area. Is, is that part of what the discussions have been and, and the committees make up?
So, the, the original design of the committee, we, we had reached out to have more racial and ethnic diversity on the committee. Unfortunately, a lot of those members were unable to sort of stay with the processes they had intended, you know, for a variety of reasons that life sort of gets in the way. I, I would go back to, as a group, our desire was to provide a system that is more likely to better serve all of our kids. That, that was a driving force behind all of the work in this committee. And when we acknowledge that our current system isn't doing what we want it to do for all kids, there is a recognition as you move through this, and it'll be especially incumbent on us when we get into the boundary work to make sure that differential impact is top of mind. I think one reality that we had as a committee is there's already differential impact in our system. So, to the extent that when we go through this process, we can address some of that, I think will be a priority. An example would be Van Buren. If you look at Van Buren right now, Van Buren's number 19, it's over on the southwest side. Former charger sitting in front of you speaking in this microphone right now. One of the things that we know about Van Buren is there are almost no students at Van Buren that actually live in what might be thought of as a neighborhood school for Van Buren. So, Van Buren is also bursting at the seams and is one of our most enrolled elementary schools. So, you may be thinking to yourself, "So, how can that be?" Well, the way that can be is, if you go to the mobile home parks on the west edge of town out by suburban lumber, we bus kids in from out there. That is largely Latino and children disproportionately impacted by poverty. That, the neighborhood that's also thought of as Westdale Apartments, am I doing this right? Westdale Apartments is in there. Westdale Apartments would be a group of people that are largely immigrant, in, in many cases Latino, and disproportionately free and reduced lunch. So, if you look at Van Buren Elementary right now, the, the kids that populate Van Buren Elementary are already disproportionately impacted potentially, depending on how one thinks about being disproportionately impacted by boundary and school decisions. So, as this committee, so serving all kids was top of mind in the committee, a recognition that the ecosystem of our community will be changed in moving from 21 to 13 students, or 13 buildings. The bigger picture sort of step back of this is, this is an opportunity to co-create our community. So, Kristen asked questions about, "Will staff be involved?" Gary said, "Will be, community be involved?" Mary talked about neighborhoods. All of those things in my mind blend back to the idea that whatever plan gets ultimately approved by this board is going to be an opportunity to co-create our community with meeting the learning needs of all kids in mind and in particular, serving kids who've been traditionally disproportionately impacted by decisions. When I was at that panel discussion a week or so ago, one of the things that came up is, research studies consistently demonstrate that people in vulnerable populations are often disproportionately impacted by decisions made at, by schools and cities. And part of the reason for that is, they're already vulnerable populations. So, what can we do as this committee, depending on what decisions are made by this board, to keep all of our kids in mind and make sure to the extent possible that vulnerable populations are not disproportionately impacted by the decisions we're going to make, not only at this table, but as we co-create the future of our community through a new elementary footprint?
Other questions? Jennifer?
And this relates back to providing services to kids to best be able to accentuate their educational experience. I would like for us to consider full-time media specialists per building moving forward and I would like to see what, how that would change the finances of what's been proposed.
So, full-time media specialist, if I understand, we're talking about four specials as a potential. So, you've got PE, art, music, a media specialist, if I'm not mistaken. Do you want to?
Yeah, so I, I would happily speak to this one. So, this is page 23 or something in your packet. Am I guessing that correctly? Boom. All right. So, one of the things you see in that decision, so that framework is intended to be provided to give sort of a general outline of what we would expect to see as it relates to potential opportunities for general fund reinvestment in our schools in moving from 21 to 13. And I think unfortunately, near the start of the process, we started to frame that conversation as a savings. No one ever desired for that to be a savings. Everyone desired that to be a transmission of cost, that is overhead cost, David, I love you, but from principals and others that are overhead back into classroom supports. That's really what that is intended to be, not intended to be some kind of cost savings. So, if there's some direction as we move forward, so I would say this about that chart, one of the things that if we could go back and live our lives over and do something differently, this might be an opportunity to do that. And I'll give you an example. We have an item on there called facilitator, okay? So, people have that in line item in there as facilitator. And what we had that facilitator line item in there for is a recognition that there's likely a need for more support in the administrative sort of part of being in a school than would otherwise be necessary in a smaller school, in a 600-student facility. So, I wish we wouldn't have called it facilitator because we have a whole nother grouping of jobs in Cedar Rapids School called facilitators. They are funded through special education and those roles will exist in our schools regardless of what happens with the number of schools that we have. So, the reason that's important is, we try to honor that we would probably need more supports, so we put that facilitator role in as a placeholder for partial assistant principal, maybe you move to a model where you split halftime assistant principal in one building, halftime in another, maybe you add an additional guidance counselor, sort of depending on the needs of the students in the context. But we did have a placeholder for an added cost. So, that's one thing I would say about that chart. I'm gonna say three things and I'm gonna get to your question, I promise. The second one is, all these other supports that exist in schools that aren't in the chart still exist. So, we have special education funding that hires facilitators and a variety of other types of jobs. We have Title I supports. We have all kinds of supports in buildings that are funded through dropout prevention, modified allowable growth. We have funding streams called teacher leadership and compensation that provides instructional design strategies, on and on and on. So, one of the worries when people see that chart is, they say, "Holy cow, where are all these other jobs that we have in schools? Are all those jobs going to now no longer exist because of this chart?" And the answer to that question is, no. No. They will continue to exist, but we didn't put them into this chart because this is sort of a general fund overview snapshot of what we would anticipate happening for reinvestment in our schools. And finally, as it relates to teacher librarians, my sense is, we probably do need full-time teacher librarians in this model. And the reason I would say that is exactly what President Lavery has highlighted, which is, if we really want to get to four-person PLCs and robust professional learning community time for four teachers in each grade level, the only way to really make that happen is to have four specials so that there are places for children to go while their teachers are having robust conversations about designing even better lessons for our kids. The other thing it does is, I've heard a concern related to specials teachers having 24 sections over three days. If you go to a four-section model and four specials, you go from teaching 24 sections as a specials teacher in three days, we're getting to nitty-gritty detail, but these are things that are real things, that goes to 24 sections over four days. So, that provides some flexibility in a specials teacher's day at that point to provide other additional support that may be helpful in a model that we're trying to work to serve all kids. And so, what that might mean is, they pull a small group, reading group on the side. It might mean whatever those things are that it could be. So, the nice thing is, because we believe that this is going to lead to differential cost, that there is going to be money to reinvest in our classrooms and one choice we may make with our reinvested dollars, those two points, some million dollars, depending on what happens with busing, is moving to full-time media specialist. So, that's a long answer to. that's a long answer to like a whole lot of things that have been discussed in a lot of ways that might also give comfort to our staff members that might be listening or ultimately listen to this.
And that sort of reminds me, too, we talk about pulling out students for one-on-one instruction, and as I go through our elementary buildings, I see a lot of individual volunteers or teachers sitting in hallways, which are pretty narrow hallways to begin with, doing this instruction. So, as we walk through Lynn Mar and College Community, it seemed that they already had specially-designed spaces for that sort of instruction and that individual work, and I'm assuming that that would be built, and that's part of this design work. Okay. All right. Other questions?
John, I-
Yeah, Gary?
Looking at, I'm looking at this, the committee, page one, committee reasoning between site reinvestment. Before, I have a question about that, but I need to make sure that I'm looking at it right. On page four, it's, look, it lists the schools. Steve, a chance to get there. It's listing the schools, and are those, the first two numbers, the square miles and acres, are those the footprint of those schools?
That is a geographic territory of their attendance center. That's what the square miles represent. So, if you look at Gibson, you see, did I use the right word? Sorry. Boundaries.
It's their boundaries?
Yes.
It's their boundaries.
Gibson is 35.9 square miles. That is a very large, if you look at, well, you don't see it on this, but if you turn the page, the next page, you'll see, and I do believe, Justin, we do have the current, the current school district boundaries, if you could find it, there you go. So, you can see how large Gibson is. It's significant. Is that a neighborhood school? Probably a very large neighborhood, but this idea around neighborhoods, when you look at the current 21 elementaries, you see that a lot of them are very large geographically that require high levels of transportation, both bus and car. So, anyway, that's a long-winded answer to your question.
So, we have from less than one mile, it looks like, .9 miles, all the way up to almost 36 square miles for some of our elementary schools that we consider to be neighborhood schools. So, there's a huge variance.
Is the second column then just in acres?
Yes.
That-
It's the same, it's a different metric, but it's a measurement of size, area size.
Then, it nullifies my question, because I was wondering between the, when they were talking about choosing Wright over Kenwood, they said the Wright size is bigger, has a bigger footprint than Kenwood.
That may, that may be a good segue into a discussion that I would like to have, because I know that it's been brought up in some public discussions. So, as the, as the committee was looking at, especially our commitment into some of the more core neighborhoods, I know originally there was some discussion about moving the schools in a ring around the city and how far out that would be, and then I think there was that discussion about pulling them. We were really committed to the core neighborhoods as well. And so, we have first on here, Arthur versus Garfield. Now, we've, many of us have talked at hours with some of our historical preservation folks in town, and there appears to be some significant interest in the uniqueness of the Garfield architecture versus Arthur. When we look at Kenwood, there's been some discussions, and David, you can help us, Kenwood has this amazing leadership program, and as a board, we've worked very, very hard to try and move the dial on student achievement, and it seems to be making a difference at Kenwood. We heard from a mother at our last board meeting that was very concerned that her child wouldn't have the opportunity to go to Kenwood. And again, as I look at the heat map of those, I'm just wondering between Kenwood and Wright, and Arthur and Garfield, if, if we would flip-flop those, would, would there be a concern from the committee or the administration or anybody on the board about at least having that discussion? Is there something about keeping Wright versus Kenwood and Garfield versus Arthur, two of our older schools, in that kind of core part of the community? Several people have asked about that, and I know the historical preservation folks have brought that up, some of them.
Well, and John, I don't know if it would be helpful, looking at that page one, I had the same questions, especially about Kenwood and Wright. But I find a lot that these points that were brought forward about being a larger site, Wright being almost an additional acre of land, and the fact, and I think it was reinforced tonight by one of the teachers, is it's, it's the people within the building that make it. So, I'm less concerned about moving the Kenwood magnet program to a different building, because I think that if, if the program is great, which I hear great things about it, then it will continue to be great regardless of where it's housed. And this larger acre, this, the proximity, these, the rationale here, I don't know how other people feel on the board, but an, almost an acre of land, that, that's a big difference when we're talking about increasing to a 600-student school. I would support continuing with, at least for this, Kenwood Wright. I mean, I think that those are discussions that need to continue to be, but, but this helps me a lot, to put it into perspective.
David, do you have some thoughts about the, the staff? I mean, obviously, you're the principal, you've been there for a few years and-
Yeah. So, this document in front of the board does a not great job of summarizing the conversation about Kenwood or Wright in the conversation we had with the facility committee. Just speaking from my personal preference, when I've had conversations with our community, majority of the concerns that have been expressed to me is about the ecosystem we've created within the Kenwood Leadership Academy. Once I've told our community that there will always be a leadership academy, that's put their concerns at ease. Then there's a question, you know, they want to know when and where, and all those kind of questions, we don't have, we don't have answers to at this time, but the biggest thing that I hear from our community is, will there always be a Kenwood Leadership Academy? Because they want that. And then I also do hear concerns around historical value in the neighborhood, but those are far and few between what I, what's, what's expressed to me around just the ecosystem we've created within the school.
Yeah, Jennifer?
So, again, looking at that square footage that's available, well, the acreage that's available for the different sites and why they were considered, I'm assuming that, that they're considered when they have the larger landmass, because it's going to be easier to do a replace on site and still maintain a playground while that replace on site is happening, correct?
I think the only site that that wouldn't be true is, there was a lot of conversation about the Johnson site, and how essential that location was, just for a variety of reasons, particularly when we started to look at trying to balance the distribution of schools across the district. So, there were a variety of considerations.
Has that Johnson replace on site, have you come up with a, a solution as to how to do that and still allow kids to have access to playground and no? Okay.
So, back to the, the Arthur-Garfield, so, and again, Dr. Buck, I think you've probably had more conversations, the historical value of Garfield, it's in the, the college district neighborhood between Co-College and Mount Mercy, which the city is looking at evidently for investment, you know, something similar to what's been done potentially in the Newbo area. These are just things that people have talked to, to some of us about. Is there, is there any discussion, I'm reading what you have here, but is there value to have Garfield and the historic preservation there, closer to downtown, that walkability versus Arthur, especially if we kept Kenwood? Or if we kept, I mean, either one?
I'll try and speak to it a little bit, and I'll be the one to wade into the deep water. I, I think when, when we were talking about it, it was truly by the metrics of what is the site size, will this work, and, and backed against the heat map. It's like we backed into it, you know, we decided on, on the 604 section, and then we just kept backing in with all the other different things that were available to us. Only speaking for myself, but there was other people in the, in the committee that agreed, you can't let the architecture wag that dog. And so, I think the assumption is, well, if Garfield isn't a school, then it's rubble on the ground, and that is not the approach at all. That building definitely has architectural value, and to your point about the college district, the area action plan, I sit on that as well, could be a great apartment building and be preserved historically and be kept in, in the neighborhood and be kept in the community, but it's not an appropriate school. That's what we came up with.
So, I'm just going to add a comment to that, if you, if you mind, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I have talked to area developers about repurposing some of the schools that we would be exiting, and there was a lot of great interest in that. So, there's a contingent of people that are talking about, if this plan moves forward, that they've got some exciting opportunities that they would like to reinforce that neighborhood, community, school sort of setting. So, if we decided to go ahead and move forward with this plan, what, what committee do you have or intend to have in place that would continue to inform the board in these five-year increments, if you will, to which schools and what demographic, what has changed economically or demographically to help guide decisions moving forward?
Yeah, so I'll put one together. So, well, I've put one together so we can give ongoing information and feedback to the board. If I could just, if I could just give a little bit of a different view on the Arthur-Garfield, one of the things that happened with the Arthur-Garfield decision, I'll speak for me as a committee member, because I was a committee member just like everybody else. When we, when we made the Arthur decision, and if this isn't the case, just hold me accountable to it, it felt like we made that decision. So, back in April, if you remember, in the input sessions, the committee was at all-new structures. Okay? And does your folks sort of remember that being the case? Okay. And when we were talking about that, when you're talking about all-new structures, in the interim, we've heard feedback from the committee, and we've listened, and as we co-create the, the future of Cedar Rapids, is there an opportunity to maintain at least some of these sites? So, Harrison, to me, it would be a good example. How could Harrison be kept as far as Harrison is, maybe not keep that annex that's on the end of Harrison, but then add to Harrison to make it a 600-student facility, as an example. So, Harrison is potential opportunity to sort of blend the past with the present. I say all that to say, the Arthur-Garfield decision, as I recall it, is, we were thinking, Arthur, if we were going to replace schools, the new Arthur could be built on the seven or so acres that exist at Arthur across the street from the actual physical space of Arthur. If at some point we decide in co-creating this together that we're going to keep a structure, either Arthur or Garfield, Arthur becomes a little bit more complicated, because Arthur itself only sits on about two acres or something. That's not the right number, so don't fact-check me exactly, but that's pretty close. So, if we really get into a conversation where we're saying Arthur or Garfield, and we're going to keep a significant amount of the physical structure of either of those two, it may be that Garfield needs a second look, because the Garfield site is actually a larger, better site than the Arthur site, if you're going to go at it from the context of keeping the original structure. And so, I would just say that, I don't know if others, I think when we made the decision, we were thinking it wouldn't be on the two-acre site, it would be on the, likely on the seven-acre-ish part of that Arthur site, which feels a little bit different if we're talking about some amount of historic preservation for them. So.
So, so even, even if we did this with Arthur, and the new facility is built on that field area where the annex is, we may not, we may still have to do something with the old facility, not necessarily tear it down, but, but repurpose somehow, so that would not necessarily be a school facility.
Right.
Okay. Is that part of the, okay. Phil, I'm sorry, you have a question?
So, just a quick question as part of the process. I know Arthur very well, I know Garfield very well, I had kids that attended. I know those playgrounds, I know those green spaces, spent lots of time with my kids playing, you know, with them out there, along with other parents that have had their kids playing out there. And, you know, while the idea of this, you know, sounds promising of what we would want to do in looking to the future, how many people from the committee actually went out there to take a look? Was that part of the process to actually see what these spaces looked like, and maybe envision what, what a new building would look like, or adding to the existing? Was that part of this process for any of the schools? Or was it just looking strictly at data?
It was not an organized process that we went through, but I know several of us went on our own. I have, I have young children and spend a lot of time in those spaces as well. Hitting every playground is a goal every summer. And, you know, it just, to me, sitting there in those spaces and looking around and thinking the possibilities was very exciting, like what really could happen here was very exciting. I also kind of wanted to mention that, as I said before, we went through a lot of variations of possibilities of closings, and I think that Al spoke very well when he mentioned that, you know, that we've provided a framework that, and, and we, I think if you were to poll, although we came to consensus and pretty strong consensus on most of these decisions, there would be members of the committee who perhaps still think, you know, one way or the other, one school versus the other.
I wanted to comment on that. It's a matter of prioritizing the various factors that went into it. I mean, size of the footprint for the school and what they could, but outside facilities it could have. One of the preeminent factors that were important, though, is we want to stay in the core areas. So, we were really, and Arthur may not be an ideal site, but it needs to be in that area or Garfield area, because it's a core area. And so, that was a priority. As Phil said, we considered historical importance, it was significant, but at the same time, we thought we had to look at how we best educate our kids and how we give them the best building that we could. In some circumstances, some historical nature of those buildings might become more important, and that would perhaps sway which one you pick. But that's, we were considering the variety of factors to try to get to those conclusions, and it was very important to keep schools in the core of the city.
Right. I mean, that's important. I mean, that's one of the things that, I'm sure we've all heard it, that there's concern, there's criticism, that some of these things were predetermined outcomes, that, you know, what was the priority, right? And did somebody come in, oh, well, these are going to be a priorities, it's going to be historic preservation or certain parts of the city, or certain schools, that there was some sway that somehow the board and, you know, these, this committee, you know, colluded somehow. But the process from the beginning was open. Everyone came in, and you took the information, and then ultimately determined what would be the priorities, right? That was part of the process?
The process was at times irritating.
Right.
It was. A lot of dots and weighing things that seemed difficult to consider. So, I think, you know, all our answers to you are to say that there's flexibility and, and there's the ability to iterate on this recommendation going forward.
Right.
You know, I think in general, what people looked at, and while we didn't tour every school, there was a significant percentage of the committee that toured a number of representative buildings that was intended to give people an overall experience of the trade-offs and the possibilities. And one of the things we haven't mentioned is that we also looked at costs to update versus cost to replace. And, you know, that's where some of the trade-offs occurred around recommendations to retain certain buildings because of recent expenditures or updates, or the relative newness of the building, like a Viola Gibson. So, I think the consensus was, we want our kids to have excellent learning environments, we want staff to have excellent working environments, and we want to be able to say to the larger community, you know, these are schools that are worthy of all of you and, and the things that you care about and you value. And it's going to take us a long time to get there. So, I think the other thing that people sometimes lose sight of is, you know, even if you voted tonight, there wouldn't be wreckers tomorrow. You know, this is, this is a long process of building the future of these, of these buildings.
Thanks. Gary?
If I could, I, since we're talking about, I spent quite a bit of time talking about the design of new facilities, and I won't go as long with the other, but as we, if we repurpose some buildings, I, again, these are community buildings, I, I believe that, and I think as a board, we probably, I would hope you'd share the idea that the community should have input into how they're used. And we keep thinking of maybe as a negative, but, but losing a building may- but, but losing a building maybe, not maybe, but it could be a real asset to the neighborhood. They have input of how could we strengthen the neighborhood, what could be in that space? And again, I don't want to dictate, that's the community, but there are, I think, possibilities. And there's a lot of fear, maybe distrust. I would also strongly suggest that we have that commitment of before we, or as we move to repurposing, we have a commitment to this is what it's going to be, and not let it sit for two or three years without it. It might be a tough thing to do, but I think the community deserves those conversations in that direction.
I think Mary sort of alluded to this with the Monroe School. Although that took a few years, there definitely has been an ongoing commitment from the district. And I went back and looked at the district since the 1860s, when it was founded, and there really have been dozens of repurposings and closings and moving one school to another, middle schools that used to be high schools and high schools that were built that had, Washington High School had, I don't know how many trailers back in the seventies and eighties, I think it was, before Kennedy was actually built. So students, they had them all lined up so that the public could see all the trailers, right, so that they would approve, I think, Kennedy High School, probably. But, but nonetheless, there have been a lot of changes. And I did not find examples of where the district just abandoned property and let it sit for decades and become urban decay. So that's, that's not the history of this district, and knowing our board members and our current superintendent, I don't think that's the intent by any means of this board. So I appreciate that. And I absolutely think, and again, you guys all were open session, now we can talk about this, but I think we have a commitment that any building that would be closed, we would want to bring together that neighborhood, whatever that population is, the, the city representatives, the building, the contractors, the nonprofit agencies in town that help support many of those services for some of our most vulnerable populations, to bring those folks together to have that conversation. What do you want on this site? I had one, a couple after the last meeting come to me, they were from the Madison neighborhood, which Nancy represents, and they were scared to death that high-density apartment building, low income was just going, that was what it was gonna be if we, that was gonna get torn down, and they would have no say in it. And once we started having that conversation about, there's no decisions about this at all, what would you dream about having, you know, as part of your neighborhood, as part of your community? What services do you need? What businesses would you like? Do you need more affordable housing? Do you want more families to be moving into that neighborhood? The conversation completely changed. And again, I think, and again, speaking for me, but I think for the board is that that's kind of the direction that we would like to see this, this go. So any, any piggybacking on that, or?
I'll just add, if you watch how council makes decisions on development, they, it goes through that process of how does it impact the neighborhood, and they do take into consideration all of the neighbors' concerns and requests. So that process is reinforced, not just through the district, but through the city.
And I think conversely, with any new facilities, all the discussions that we've had, and when we went and looked at College Community and Linmore and, and some of the things they wished they would have done, how can these new facilities be purposed intentionally for the needs of that area? So when we talk about having access in evenings and weekends like we do at the Northwest Recreation Center with Harrison, that's really a critical issue. Key card access and security for our kids and the rest of the building is key. I've looked at the Aldine School District, I've mentioned this a few times over the years, down in the Houston area. They intentionally have areas in their media center or their library, lots of computers and things. The community colleges come in and they do job training and skill building for the parents. A lot of these parents did not have really great experiences, it's high poverty, lots of immigrant families. But they come in and they use that facility evenings and weekends while the kids are getting extra supports in their work and also all kinds of recreational activities and things in other parts of the buildings. But those kids see their parents valuing education and recognizing, setting an example that even though it wasn't so great when I was, whenever in K-12, this is important, I value this, and it's going to be important to us. So I'm sitting there looking at Al, I, I know we've had lots of conversations in the past, I know, you know, those are the kinds of opportunities that sort of get me excited about what, what could be with these facilities. And it really depends on what the community and these neighborhoods and the city and so forth value, so. Gary?
John, as I go through and we've, a lot of the things that I had that I wanted to make sure I covered are, are been hit by myself or others, so. But before we run out of time or whatever, there, there is a key point that I, I want to make, and that's that we as a board, we now have the information, we need to have somehow more community conversations. As I said, what I, what I experienced at Grant Wood, it, we, we walked away. It doesn't mean that we necessarily changed anyone's mind, but there was a greater understanding, and I can't help but behoove that it would help to, help to, with our community building, that of some way. The other, as I look around, I'm concerned that, you can say that, well, we have a public input tonight and, and so on. Thirty percent of our school population is minority. Fifty percent is free and reduced. I'm, look around, I don't think I'm seeing reflective. So somehow, and I, I, it's a, it's been a, something I think we've scratched our head with lots of times, but I think we need to find some way to, to go to them rather than expecting them to come to us. And so I really advocate that we have community conversations to help strengthen not only relationship, but also to get the inputs and the understandings from the community as we move forward. And I think saying that, I think we may have to look at pushing back a little bit, maybe a final decision on, on this. I think it was, we were looking at a vote January 22nd or whatever.
That was, that was the earliest date it could be.
Right. Okay.
So I have-
Nancy?
I have a question for Gary. How many additional community conversations are you thinking we need? And I understand changing the location, and I think that is important. So we have the input of the entire community. But do you have a sense of how many additional community conversations?
You know, I, I don't. I mean, I don't say, do we have six? Do we do one in each quadrant? I, I don't, other than, again, my experience, what I saw at the library, what I saw at Grant Wood, the more conversations, the more interaction that we have. This is the biggest, you know, I've been in Cedar Rapids education for 47 years. The last biggest impact that we had in the educational system, I believe, was when we moved from a K-6 to a middle school concept that had such an impact on a total system. What we're talking about is going to have probably even a greater impact than that decision. So, again, we've had, I, there's been a lot of conversation, there's been a lot of dialogue, but I'm still hearing when I go out, there are people that, that haven't heard about our, our five main bullet points that, that Dr. Buck referred to earlier. And they start hearing that and they know, it isn't just about brick and mortar. Brick and mortar don't teach kids. You know, it's important and we ask for that and we need to move forward, but it is still staff, and that's the most important thing. So to answer your question, I, I don't know. Maybe it's a, we start somewhere. I would, I don't know if it's fair to ask you, but you are one of the minority sitting on, how do we get to, how, what would be a way that we could go to some of those minority to get more input? And not just minority, but just even some of their lower socioeconomic into some of our areas. So I think we go out and we try to have some conversations, to do it maybe off-site of a building, to do it at, do it in a church, do it in a, in a public, in Mercy Hospital, you know, their meeting room. I, I don't know. I think we need to have those conversations.
One of the questions, though, Gary, as, as you bring this up, are, are you discounting the fact that many of us have spent dozens of hours with many of these people? So when, when I talk to other board members and to Dr. Buck about this, so the, the Save Our Cedar Rapids neighborhoods, the Grant Wood neighborhood, basically, ninety percent, I guess, of the communications I'm getting, and I don't know about the other board members now, but it's from that one neighborhood. And it really comes down, after meeting with some of the leadership of that neighborhood association, it's not really a true neighborhood association, but that group, it really comes down to a fundamental disagreement. We want to keep that school. They don't seem to have issues with the rest of this. The other thing is the issue about historic preservation. Is the school district responsible for maintaining and preserving historic facilities, or is, is education our number-one goal? Is there a way to try and do both? For me personally, I can keep asking, I went to all of the, the open sessions, we extended this whole process by another six months, we added three more, so we had nine total open forums. I went around and talked to people at all of those. How much more, I, I watched the, the presentation at the library, I listened to all the comments, same people, same comments, reiterating what their points already were. We've, we've asked, we've had three or four different alternative plans presented to us, we've asked the administration, we've asked attorneys, we have asked all these folks to go back through that information and say, is this realistic? Is this possible financially? Does it make sense? And we've had those conversations with the folks that have presented those to us. And I think tonight in this discussion, I mean, if there are specific things that you, you feel, so, so the one thing is you feel we're not getting enough of the minority or low-income population in this conversation, is that correct? So when we had it at Washington High School or Jefferson High School or wherever we've been or individually talked to folks, that's, that's not been enough information.
Yes. I, I think in some of those areas, again, if you'd looked, you looked at the, you looked at the room, there were more than what we have here, but it wasn't representative of the, of the total population. John, I want to just go back to, and you're absolutely correct, there's been lots of opportunity. But we've also, as a board, have said to the public, well, we don't have a plan yet, so we, we're not going to react because we're waiting for the plan. And so then we had the plan, and then there was, well, we need to have this conversation. It's all appropriate, but the buck now stops with us. And so it is us having that direct conversation, I think. You've met individually with some people, I understand, I have, I'm not faulting in saying that, you know, you have, we've not been approachable. But we've also, in that approach, we've not, we've not directly had a plan or a reaction to what we can do. The other, as we move through, we may modify this plan in some ways. And let me tell you, if we start moving some schools around, there will be another new conversation to some of those and we might hear from. And the third thing is, I think it's also said, and the funding issue. I, I won't vote for, I'll say publicly right now, I won't vote for moving this forward with a bond issue. To me, it has to be based on SAVE right now. If SAVE doesn't go through, then I think it's, we relook at the conversation, because I don't think we can, I, I couldn't support moving this plan, a $230 million plan, as a bond issue right now.
Well, that hasn't been part of the discussion.
No, but, but here's where I'm getting to. There has been some talk of, as we move forward, at some point, we move to middle school, high school, there may be bond issues that will have to be.
Years from now?
Yes, years from now. And we will need public support years from now, from whenever we do that. So the more that we can culture that public support, the more that we can have, build the trust. And I, and I believe in whether me of minority, I think there's still some trust that is, that is developed within the community. The more that we can build that, the better off that we will be as a community.
I think one of the things, Gary, is, as I look at this, the tiers that the committee built into this, the phases, and our board regulation that we're going to look at at the next board meeting to mandate that the board look at these transitions and facilities and things at least every five years minimum, as, as we've said, this is not in granite, this isn't etching something in the stones and putting it up on the mount for eternity. Things, even in the next five years, likely could change. Things could change. There could be flood mitigation on the west side of the river eventually. There could be a huge downturn in the economy. There could be private school vouchers. There could be all, you know, Rockwell Collins issues are in the newspaper right now. There's lots of things that are out there that are unknown. But for me, this is the plan to get us started. And that first phase says, let's get at least a couple of these buildings underway so the public can see what we're talking about. And, you know, as a board, we can sort of dictate that. And after that first phase or that first few buildings, if we don't like it, if the principals and the teachers in those buildings and the community comes back and says, boy, what a mistake we made on, on that, and, and we need to really modify and think about this, or maybe our enrollments are going through the roof because they see these new buildings, or they see some really cool stuff going on at the magnet schools that we're developing, we might have to think about something else. And on top of that, and you all know this, our school district goes all the way up I-3, I-380 north, up to the county, county home road and over into Hiawatha. That whole area is bursting at the seams with prospective new development. We've got 38 acres out on the far west side that, I don't know, some had accused us of wanting to build a skyscraper elementary and busing every kid out there, which, that was never, did you guys ever talk about that, by the way?
Hey, John.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't want to lose track of what Gary's saying, because I think communication is gonna be key. And we, we've heard it from the planning committee, we've heard it from Dr. Buck, we've heard it from various board members, that when it comes to the specifics of how this plan will be implemented, there needs to be communication. What do the communities want with their buildings? What I've heard repeatedly from the different members is this is a framework and this is iterative. So for me, as a person that's gonna be voting on this, I think it's gonna be key to say, am I voting on this plan as written? Or am I, is, is there a concept of, I am voting to approve that Cedar Rapids Community School District will pursue decreasing their schools down from 21, 21 to 13 with the goal of 600? So I think I'm taking it back to what I heard from you all is, when you got this assignment, you listened to what are, what the intent was for the district. What did the district want for our students, for our community, and you started forming the ideas around that. For me, the facility plan is a lot of really great work by a lot of interested people and engaged people who provided what they felt to be the best thing. And they provided different, several different options. As a board, what I would see me voting on is, do I take what the goals they were given and how they interpreted that need of 600 schools and the basic outline, framework, not the specifics of what Arthur, if it's Arthur or Garfield or who it is, but those specifics of, that we do know at this point. Thirteen schools, 600 classrooms, this many sections, that's what we're voting, that in my mind is what we're voting for. The conversations with the communities of what does that mean in Kenwood? What does that mean for Garfield or Arthur or whatever? And is it a new building? Is it, is this infrastructure, or is the, the facade of this building important enough that we, for your community that we need to keep it? Those are conversations that are gonna happen later. The, the plan right now, to me, is, do I believe and trust in the work that, and the discussions and the conversations and the need for our district that occurred and that I know and I've heard to say, we need 13 schools that have that capacity and it just lay out.
The one thing, and I'm not disagreeing with the need for communication, but the one thing, the administration needs to have a starting point. So, starting point, this committee, all the folks that put this time into it have said, there's a first phase to this, and I don't know how quickly that would start, three, depending on SAVE.
Yeah, if SAVE happens, then the money's available July 1st, oh, thank you. So if SAVE were to be extended, the money is available, about $212 million available July 1st, 2020. If SAVE was passed in this session, then we would know that, so we could start to plan in a way that would say, let's get shovels in the ground on that first school in the summer of 2020, and open that first elementary school in the fall of '21.
And there's a lot of conversations that would happen between now and then, or between whenever the vote occurs, and that shovel in the ground.
Right. So part of this is, as we get into this process, we have to work hard to honor what we've said all along in this process, and even tonight, which is, once something is decided, we need to engage our community in conversation. So the example I always give, because it's the only one that makes really great sense to me, but that doesn't make it right. If we look at this tier, and you look at the needs of Coolidge, Coolidge is the building most in need relative to the cost of replacement. So if some plan is approved, then I think we start the conversation with Coolidge, as an example. We engage folks that are in the Coolidge boundary. We draw a mile and a half circle or something on Coolidge, and say, let's start dreaming about what the next version of Coolidge would look like. And so we start to engage the conversation around that. The only caveat I would give to this conversation is this, the committee, and if this isn't what you experienced, please do say something else, we went through iteration after iteration after iteration of what the dispersment of this boundary would be, in terms of what would make the most sense. And we did that over a number of meetings. And there was this one meeting where, in multiple groups, we were all doing, attending to the same conversation, which is, if there were going to be 13 schools dispersed based on size of the facility, heat map, probably other criteria that I'm not thinking of off the top of my head, what would be the best dispersment? And in three or four different groups, we acted independently. And we came together to talk about what we decided independently, and what we found is, they were the same. So we had talked about this enough, looked into this enough, to say, there seems to be something about this pattern that makes sense when you take people through a rigorous discussion and conversation. So I get a little bit, and I'm not saying it's the exact right pattern, but I would say, to say it's just an open-ended, let's start building 600 schools, and I don't think that's necessarily what's intended in this conversation, I would want to honor that the work of the committee did, there was a moment where it was like, holy cow, that all sort of came together separately. So I just would, and others, if you remember that differently, I'm...
Could I attempt to stitch together a couple of things here? Gary, I think you're spot on in terms of what your concern is. I was at the Grantwood PTA Open House that evening, and there's a point to this. From the very first comment and question that was raised tonight, and many of the questions that were raised at the Grantwood Open House, what people are describing is the process known as programming. And programming happens after you've decided to move ahead with the project, engaged a consultant to start guiding you through. In my opinion, what we're seeking is approval for the term that's being used, the framework. Kristin, you described it perfectly. To make a decision on the framework so that you can start programming. And I think many, if not all, of the questions, concerns, fears that people have get pressed out in the programming process. Steve and I were at a college district area action plan open house that was held at Co. College, one of the best-attended open houses that the city's had in much, in a long time. And I remember Steve saying, this is really neat. And I'm like, Steve, this is what the schools need to do when you pull the trigger, so that we engage each neighborhood, just like you said, Brad, to draw that radius, send out mailers, start the communication, and draw them in. You can't make them come, but you know they're invited, but to draw them in and be a part of the process. And programming has nothing to do with pulling the trigger on the framework. And we truly are bringing this product forward and saying, we believe this is a framework that achieves the goals that we were charged with coming forward. You have to get a yes to that before you can start on programming. And programming is the fun part. It is the community hub element. It is the, what is unique about this particular school area, this particular neighborhood, that will make it work. The person at the podium earlier that said they had a coat closet, but they couldn't really do what they wanted to do because it really needed a room. Okay, that becomes part of the program. And I really, really believe that that is what everybody is asking for, is the detail. But you can't get to the detail until you pull the trigger on the framework.
I do want to say, too, I think that this board over, well, it really started, Jim, you talked about back in 2012, 2013, we had Shav Hattery looking at every one of our buildings and looking at the needs. A lot of that was driven by ADA, but what would it really take to bring these up to, you know, modern education standards that were appropriate? And that's where that whole process started. And from that time, and I've been on the board since then, this has driven that discussion to the point where we are asking this committee. So we, as a board, over the last eighteen months, have had a number, at least four or five presentations, based on the conversations that are coming through this appointed committee to us, to give additional insight and feedback to the committee and to Dr. Buck, who is our administrative liaison to that committee, to give them that direction. So I appreciate this concept of this being the framework. And really, what I've heard is, the fun part, but also probably the bigger piece of the puzzle here, is going to be to engaging and thinking about the opportunities for all the changes that might be possible. So are there any more specific comments? Okay. So Gary, I know you want to add additional...
It can wait till next.
Huh?
It can wait till next.
No, no, here's the deal. So we've put out there publicly that September 20, or January 22nd could be the first vote on this, but I'm sensing that we may need some more conversation. And I'm wondering, we're not voting in a work session, but is there additional interest in trying to engage more with any audiences or specific publics? Add more public forums? Mary?
So I might suggest that between now and that date, that we invite any and all audiences to invite us to engage with them. In the same, in the meantime, we can seek out other audiences ourselves, and see where we're at then, in a few days, when we have to put our agenda out. We can put that on the agenda, and either say, no, we need a little more time, or go ahead and vote.
So when will we have to have our next agenda?
Well, the next board meeting would be January 22nd. And so we would start planning the agenda the Monday prior to, so a week before. And the final agenda would then be in format on Wednesday at noon, when all the editing then begins, so.
So the 17th?
Would be the 17th.
But you could still put it on, John, and we just vote to delay.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, well, again, I think the board members, if you have a specific interest in this, I mean, I'm willing, and I think that there may be some benefit to extending this, if that's what the board feels is important. So again, this is really, it's not my decision, I'm just one of seven board members.
I like, because I'm kind of, I had no, I thought through, you know, what am I asking for? And someone said, well, what do we do? And I didn't have, we promoted coffees at Hy-Vee, and they, you know, Saturday morning, and you'd get very small, good conversations, but not the kind. I think this topic, I think we now have something that would generate a little bit more. But I like the idea of, at least, putting out to the public, if you'd like, if you have a group or whatever, to contact us, and we want to have those community conversations. Realistically, we can't, we, you know, these are high-paying jobs that we have up here. And so, you know, realistically, we can't have 100 meetings.
Well, I mean, if you have more than quorum or more, we have to publish meetings and have all the...
Right. So it has to be done, and the public has to understand, it would have to be, you know, three or less, you know, people that would be there. But to give us, we're still sitting in, as a barrier, when we have them at the board meetings. We can't react to the public as they come up. We can't have that dialogue, and I know individually, we've done. But one last thing I had on my list, and that's, and I think we've already somewhat gone around it, but the idea of going slow, at least, to begin with. I'd like to see a structure built, or two structures built, going through the processes that we're outlining, talking about, show the community, so the community has a chance to see how the process works, what we've done, and help to build that trust, and show what it is, and also work out some of the kinks and the bugs that we've had. I don't want, and I think we're all in agreement, the cookie cutter, what we build the last time, those four Jackson, Van Buren, whatever, and architecturally designed, put them out there all at the same time and not. But if we also look at, we're going to come back, if I look at the timeline, even with the resolution that we passed, it would be after we're into Tier Two, before we did the review. Five years would put it at 23, according to the plan that we were given.
Five years from now, from when we've passed this?
Right. Wouldn't that, wouldn't that put it at 23? Tier Two starts in the middle of 2022. So I'm just saying that we'd already, according to the plan, we'd already, would've moved into the second tier without that discussion.
So the board regulation, that's the most, the maximum amount of time that we, as a board administration, could wait until we looked at it. If we, as a board, want to look at it every single year, we can choose to do that. So I think you've made this point, and some others have made the point, Gary, that we need to sort of take a phased approach, and maybe do one on one side of the town, and one on the other side of the city, and let the people see that. And I sort of am envisioning that be happening as a natural part of this phasing that the committee talked about. So does that make, is that kind of where you guys were at, or?
Well, so I think this gets to Phil's point a bit about programming. I would just put this out there. We have to be thoughtful about the first couple of schools, because what we don't want to have is, we build 600 student sites and have them sitting there at half or two-thirds capacity because we haven't, and I'll be courageous and say an example. If you start with Coolidge, and you look at the Tier One schools, you almost need to do Jackson next. And the reason for doing Jackson next, if you're familiar with the west side at all, Coolidge and Jackson, do you see that blue school in the center that is Truman? That is likely the first logical place to say, let's engage about Coolidge and what the dream of Coolidge will be. Let's dream about Jackson, and let's also engage Truman in what repurposing and the next dream of Truman would look like. If you look at that tier and do Coolidge, and then Arthur, and then Jackson, one, you don't have a place to put kids in Arthur, if Arthur were to be some kind of rebuild that's Arthur itself, and even if it's a new Arthur, then you end up with a Coolidge and an Arthur, and you review your process, and you say, how's it going? And you say, well, we got two schools, one on each side of the river, each sitting half-full. That doesn't necessarily make strategic good sense either. So I think, I think if we're going to go down the path of saying, let's sort of audit this along the way, which I think is important, I think we also need to get into the conversation about Coolidge and Jackson, for example. And then if you wanted some east-of-the-river examples, then what would get coupled with Arthur to look at as sort of the next part of the process, or realistically, as this unfolds? So I just would give that cautionary note, that I'm concerned about saying, we'll do one on one side of the river and one on the other side of the river, when that may not practically be the best strategy, but...
And as we communicate further, or the next two weeks, or four weeks, or whatever that timeframe is, we're talking about the framework. That's what we're approving. We're not getting into the details of each of these quadrants at that point in time, right? And once we agree to the framework, then we engage the conversation on the programming, if you will. Thank you, Phil.
Why we have the committee, I'm sorry, John, but why we have the facility committee, I have a question about Johnson. When you were looking at that, there's been many conversations about why, you know, could we have it a larger school of 600? Did the committee at any time look at knocking down Johnson and building from the ground up? And would there, with that, with that plan, would there be a chance to have a larger building? And one of the things, as I was thinking about that, you say something about outside space and so on, I visited at one time an elementary school in San Francisco, and it was for a much different reason, but they had their playground on their roof, and they had it fenced in. It was, it was security. It had a lot to do with the neighborhood and security. But so there may be ways of thinking outside the box, and I just, I know, in some of the community conversations, people have said, well, are we shorting the Johnson area by not giving them the capacity of some of the others?
Gary, you're in programming. You have to get out of programming.
Right.
We'll get to those concepts.
Well, but I wanted the committee, just, the committee didn't, I just want to know whether or not they looked at some of the information that's come through it. They said they, there wasn't because of the footwork. I just wondered if it was always looking at extension rather than completely rebuilt. That's all.
You know, the assumption was that actually Johnson would be replaced.
It is a rebuild.
It's a rebuild.
It's knocked down completely and rebuilt. Okay.
It's a rebuild.
Thank you.
But still at 450, simply because of the space constraints. I get your point about maybe you go up and you use the playground and put it on the roof, and again, that is programming, those are maybe options. There was some, I would call it angst, about having the one-off, the one 450 school and everything else being programmed around 600. But it just seemed like there was such physical limitation that everybody, over time, became okay with that. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
I apologize. I thought it was a build, it was going to be an extension, a build on, like, I think Grant is what we're talking about. That's not a knockdown, but a build-out. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else at this point? So what I'm sensing, and correct me if I'm wrong, let's go to the next meeting on January 22nd. We'll plan for this discussion, we'll put out the word. We've got the media here, we've got all of our media outlets that are here tonight. Talk to the school board. Is there a person that you would recommend that they talk to, to ask for that information? Can they, is there, can they email Laurel, as the board secretary, to put those requests to us, or to you directly, Dr. Buck, or Steve Graham? Is there any, can we put that out?
Can we get my address directly, your school addresses?
School addresses, put out there to our school addresses. Again, I'm not comfortable setting up full board meetings with all the, I mean, less than quorum, which I'm not sure that still gets at, because some of us have already done that, and there's those sorts of things that have been ongoing. But I'm willing to do that, if that's what you all want. So we'll set up January 22nd, ask the community if they want to have us come in and have more conversations with them about the framework, which, again, we truly appreciate. I think that that's a great way, Phil, to put that for us to consider. And then if we're ready, I'm going to also ask that we have another work session, just on the books, if we feel like we need another work session to talk through this. At that point, we can decide to extend it, as Mary has said. Or if we're comfortable with the framework, as it's called, go ahead, and we can vote on the 22nd, if the board is ready to do that. So I really leave this up to the community to tell us what it is that you feel you need beyond those that have already talked to us. I mean, again, many of us have spent many, many hours listening, and again, I'm more than willing, as a volunteer on this board, to spend more hours listening to conversations. But for me personally, I want to make sure that it's additional information, that it's new information, that it gets at what we've talked about tonight, and what we've heard directly now from those that were serving on the committee from a whole variety... directly now from those that were serving on the committee, from a whole variety of backgrounds. And I would encourage you to also ask Dr. Buck and Steve Graham and others that were part of this on the administrative side, if you have questions of them during this process. So does this seem like a fair, sort of equitable way to move forward on this? Okay. So I'm not getting a lot of no's, or it seems like lots of nodding heads here. So that's what we will do. With that, I would ask that the board, look at your calendars, take that into account, make sure you have the next meetings on there, and we'll put the word out to get ahold of us. So with that, the work session is closed. Thank you so much.